We're going to call our meeting for Tuesday, March ninth, the Board of County Commissioner regular meeting. It's nine oh one, and I'll be reminded that the previous chairman always started on time. Right? Correct?
Tried to.
I do want to recognize Mr. Pastor Aaron Long with the Village Search. He'll be doing our invocation this morning, and our pledge will be done by Commissioner Pickens. Mr. Long, if you'll remember, one of our commissioners, Mr. Adam Zach, is not feeling well today. If you'll remember him in your prayers, too. All stand if you can.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners, people in attendance. Let's go to the Lord. Father in heaven, Creator of all, we marvel at your glory. Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for our lives, and thank you for this beautiful county that we live in. With humble and contrite hearts, we lift up, Commissioner is not feeling well, all those with concerns of sickness and health, real and present in our lives. We ask you to give everyone here your words to speak, to do your will and your business, lead, guide, and direct what's said here today, and we ask this in Jesus's name and with the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Long. Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. I appreciate that very much. Do want to give out a congratulations to Jacob and Sarah. Today's their anniversary, so happy anniversary, and thank you for attending the board meeting for your anniversary. That's a very important milestone right there. And before I go too much further, I also want to thank Vice Chairman, or congratulate Vice Chairman Pickens. He is a new grandfather, him and his wife. So congratulations there, too, sir.
Thank you.
You and his wife are both grandfathers?
Grandfather and grandmother. So our second grandchild, Emma James, was born the first, weighed about five and a half pounds. So she's doing, mother and doing, and granddaughter are doing well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Gentlemen, our first order of business, there is the approval of the minutes as stated in the agenda.
Move approval.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. This item has been moved forward. We have a nine oh five, but we're going to go into, real quick, Mr. Andrew Usina with the Forestry Department. Would you come up and make a presentation real quick, sir?
So hello, my name's Andrew Usina. I'm with the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, Florida Forest Service. I'm the forestry supervisor, too, here in Putnam County. I'm responsible for management. I'm Carl Duvalmore at Night Creek and Willaca State Forest. I just want to make an announcement real quick. We're going to be having a meeting for our Management Plan Advisory Group for Carl Duvalmore State Forest Ten Year Management Plan. So every 10 years, we have to rewrite our management plans for each forest, and then the time's come now to put it before the public and advisory group. So on April fourteenth, we'll be having two meetings. The first one's at 10:30 a.m., and so the public at that time's invited to respond and provide any comments that they want to see, or anything they might have questions about. And then the second meeting will be the same day, April fourteenth, at 1:00 p.m., and at that time, the committee will be responding to public comments and putting everything back together. We are, this meeting, you can attend it virtually. We're stressing the virtual part, but if for some reason you cannot attend virtually, the public is more than welcome to come down to the Ag Center at 111 Yelvington Road in East Palaca. And if you do come, we just ask that you wear a face mask, still with all the COVID rules going on. If you have any questions in the meantime, want to provide public comment, you can reach me at three eight six two nine two two three four eight, or you can send me an email at andrew.usina at fdax.gov. If for some reason you need special accommodations, we just need it in writing through an email or snail mail if you want to. If you snail mail it to me, just send the mail to three ninety Holloway Road in Flora Home, Florida, three two one forty. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Usina.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thanks for your time.
Good. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our nine oh five Port Authority meeting. We're going to recess the Board of County Commissioner meeting, and we're going to engage the Port Authority meeting at nine oh five. Our first order of business for Port Authority is approval of the minutes as stated in the agenda.
I move that we approve the minutes as stated.
Proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
Take it.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on the minutes as approved, as stated in the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Is there any public comment? Public comment on Port Authority items only? Seeing none, oh, we do have some? Okay. Is that on Port Authority items?
Um...
Nope. We'll get to that in just a moment. So there is no public comment on Port Authority. So we'll close that section and go to our general discussion. Is there any general discussion, Commissioners, on Port Authority? We do have a workshop this afternoon to discuss some other issues, but do we have anything pressing this morning? Okay, seeing none, then we'll end that portion, and we'll close our Port Authority meeting and go back to our presentation. Real quick, I want to go ahead and call Nicole up with Keep Putnam Beautiful before we go to our Red Cross proclamation. We all know Nicole. Oh, she's going to ask you to do something. She brought her picker with her.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to let everyone know, I know the last meeting, I had come and asked if there was any conflicts with having April as our countywide cleanup, and there were not, so we went ahead, and we've started taking on areas for the cleanup. I've got in Flora Home. Interlaken has the 10th of April. Thank you, Mr. Harvey, I appreciate that. We also have Seminole Electric, it's going to be cleaning from seventeen down West River Road to Tangle Wild Park. So that whole section, they noticed there was a need there, and that's one of the entrances. So they're picking that up on the 24th, which is also Earth Day, so it's a great month for us. We are doing it all, all month long for the county so that we can have smaller groups instead of our very large groups that we usually have, so that there's a little bit more flexibility. If people are concerned about COVID, we are asking that you social distance about six feet apart, and if you are unable to do so and must group together with people you do not live with to wear a mask. I don't know why you would do that out on the roadside, but that's, if you do, please, you know, mask up. We're looking for anyone, it's not too small, not too, well, there's too large, but if you just have your neighborhood that you want to pick up, that's a great, great thing to do. We can do it during the week or on weekends. So just contact me at the office at three eight six three two five nine five nine eight. I'm all over the place on Facebook, and our email is keepputnambeautiful@gmail.com. And you do get one of these. These are our new ones that we were able to purchase. They're the pro versions. They're still Chinese, but like the stronger Chinese.
There you go.
So, and I have my cards if anybody wants to...
Nicole, I have asked Mr. Troxell to give us the mowing schedule, not to delay the mowing, but that we can work around that in the month of April, and Mr. Troxell's working on that now, right, Mr. Troxell? You see? Okay. So if there's areas that you see that are being, are going to get mowed, maybe we can get ahead of that mower at that time. But he's going to work that out with us and you also.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
And so Interlaken is going to happen on Saturday, April 10th, and we're going to do a big West Putnam cleanup at that time for the, for the area of Interlaken. And so if you know people that complain about garbage, please, we'll hook them up that day, and we can get, we can make Putnam beautiful.
Well, you're actually the second Interlaken group, so I have another one that wants to do one, too.
There's another group?
Yes. She's like, I just want to go down with my sister and clean up 315. I, yes ma'am.
Yeah.
Whatever you need.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Nicole, for that. Okay, going right to our National Red Cross, page thirty-three, proclamation. Red Cross members, would you come to the podium, please, and meet me there? And I've asked Commissioner Rawls to read the proclamation.
I want to give you a fair warning, this is very small print.
It's pretty lengthy, though.
The length is not the problem, it's just tiny print. Good morning. This is a proclamation number 2021-013 for the National Red Cross Month. Whereas the American Red Cross is a humanitarian organization founded in 1881 and originally chartered by Congress as a federal instrumentally, whatever that means, in 1900, but receives no federally, no federal funding. And whereas the American Red Cross prevents and alleviates human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the powers of volunteers and generosity of donors. And whereas the American Red Cross responds to more than 70,000 disasters annually and delivers vital services to members of the armed forces, their families, and veterans at home and overseas, and provides lifesaving, lifesaving health and safety training to more than five million people in 2020. And whereas March is recognized as Red Cross Month across the nation, and 2021 marks the 140th anniversary of the Red Cross and the 107th anniversary of the Florida First Charter Red Cross Chapter established here in northeast Florida in March of 1914. And whereas the American Red Cross has repeatedly answered the call to assist northeast Florida beginning with the yellow fever epidemic in 1888, including support of American troops during the Spanish-American War. And whereas northeast Florida Chapter of the Red Cross, American Red Cross provides its humanitarian services across 13 counties in northeast Florida and the headquarters of the 35-county Red Cross Northeast Florida Region stretching from First Coast across the entire breadth of the Florida Panhandle. And whereas the North Florida Region and the North Florida Chapter of the Red, American Red Cross in 2020 has helped more than 1,500 families affected by home fires and other disasters, including more than 50 clients in Putnam County. And whereas North Florida Region hosted more than a dozen blood drives throughout the region, including collections targeted at sickle cell disease and imported minority blood type collect, collections, and provided nearly 23,000 vital services to military members, veterans, and their families, and deployed more than 500 of its 1,500 volunteers in response to hurricanes and other disasters. And whereas the American Red Cross and its northeast Florida Chapter have delivered these vital services without interruption and with scrupulous attention to clients, their, and volunteers, safe, and volunteer safety throughout COVID-19 epidemic. And whereas American Red Cross disaster assist, assistance in fire and 90 cents of every dollar donated goes directly to missions, services, delivery. And whereas the Putnam County Commission recognizes March as a National Red Cross Month for 140th anniversary of the American Red Cross and the 107th anniversary of northeast Florida Chapter of the American Red Cross, and commend the volunteers and paid staff for the North Florida Region for their continued humanitarian service to the Putnam County and the state of Florida. Done, ordered, and adopted this ninth day of March, 2021. That is a long resolution.
The chair will entertain a motion.
I move a mo, I, I move approval of this proclamation.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. We have proper motion, proper seconding, further discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Thank you.
Next time, Mr. Chairman, I love myself to death.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, for that honor. Most of that work that is done in that rather lengthy proclamation is done by volunteers, men and women like Quincy Masters here, who represents us in Putnam County, and Skip Kramer, who is my right-hand man, who has helped me to be successful in this role. And I just want to thank you for your support. Those 1,600 volunteers continue to be ready for our communities when folks are least ready. So thank you for your support, and we look forward to serving you in the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you all come up, and we'll get a picture?
Oh, great.
We're going to stay up here. Mr. Suggs, would you like to join?
Sure.
Matt, would you like to join? Somebody shortened the picture here.
John, can you slide, front row, please? Slide to your, there you go, keep going to your left a little bit more, please, just a little bit more, right there's perfect. One more?
Sarah's over there.
Sarah's turn.
Sorry.
It's the flash.
I apologize.
Good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you.
Next on our agenda is our public comment on agenda items. I'm going to take a point of privilege real quick, since we did talk about Travis Roberts and Fort Gates Ferry. Travis has filled out a card to speak. Travis, you're not on the agenda, but we'd like to have you come up and give us a update of what's going on with the ferry. See here?
Yeah.
Travis, you'll have to come to the microphone.
My other comment has to do...
You'll have to come to the...
My comment has to do with Fort Gates Ferry, but it's not an update.
Okay. Pick up your microphone. The board has asked for an update as of last week, the last meeting, did you not get that information?
Yes, sir. I heard it loud and clear on the, watching the meeting, but I never got a call from anybody or anything.
Okay.
My public comment is about Fort Gates Ferry.
Okay.
The update made Commissioner Rawls and Mike Troxell had a meeting the other, phone conversation the other day with the Army Corps of Engineers, something that could have been handled a long time ago, just got finally handled. I talked to...
Go ahead and give us your comments, then, okay?
Okay. You know, unlike most of the people in this room, I wasn't born here in Putnam County. I chose to make Putnam County my home. So with that being said, what I'm about to say is probably going to piss a few people off, but I don't care, that's what I love about this country and our First Amendment and the Constitution, our right to petition our government. You know, last week at a meeting, it was said that, that, was it clear if it was the first or second oldest ferry in the state of Florida? To make it clear, it's the first, the second oldest in the United States, you know. In 1776, our constitution was written. The White House didn't become into existence until, you know, way after Fort Gates Ferry was established. We have a piece of history in this county that is older than the White House, older than our constitution. Yet some people don't want this thing and don't support it. In one of the meetings, one of the, one of the Commissioners said that they wouldn't take, they own a local business, they wouldn't take a damn ferry across the river if you gave them a brand-new pickup truck. You know, in the last meeting, one of you guys said that I kind of dropped the ball on this thing, which really aggravated me. And that, and this is like bad candy, what I'm doing. It leaves a bad taste in your mouth after so long. And then if I was a man, I would show up here, when I didn't even know anything about it. I wasn't put on the agenda. That right there kind of pissed me off. So I got the shirt, it says I'm a man and I'm here. Okay, comments like that should not be made, first of all. I came into this thing when the county was going to spend two, 250,000, or $400,000, almost a half a million dollars, on redesigning a landing that Governor Rick Scott had written the letter from the governor's office in March of 20, March 26th of 2015, stating that the landing had to remain as close to historical as possible and need to remain a wooden landing. Yet right after that, the county goes in and spends $250,000 with a local engineering company to redesign it in concrete, a waste of money when it was known. And just like the Barden Bridge, the thing was condemned, pretty much. It was taken back from 15 tons to seven tons by the state because it is a bridge. Okay, I had busted my hump on this, and one of you made a comment, why I'm tired of it taking so long, when in fact, the original grant was given for Fort Gates Ferry landing in 2002. There's been several grants for that. In 2008, the, this, the county was given a grant to do Fort Gates Ferry landing. It never got done. Nine years later, Hurricane Irma comes, comes along and wipes it out. The reason that landing wiped out and the other side didn't is because it was not maintained. It was not bought up to code. But yet it's taken me long. In 20, in 2018, the county had to give back a portion of the grant money, but they had already spent $250,000 on designing something. Then it was said, when I said, well, I can do it for a certain price, which I would not, I cut all the live feeds off because I didn't want anybody to have an advantage over anybody else, as far as how much this thing was going to cost. Then it was announced at a meeting last week. It's cost me 5,600 or 5,800, that was the engineering money that you guys agreed to go ahead, and then the 800 that was put out. The exact same thing that I spent 5,800, the county in that grant was going to spend $90,000 on an engineering thing. You know, but you, you guys are sitting there saying, what's taking me so long? I had been busting my hump, and I've kept Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Rawls. Matter of fact, Commissioner Rawls is like, I don't want to hear anymore until something else is done. And, which I respect that. But just like we said in the beginning, when one of you said they wanted Commissioner Rawls to be hands-on, the man has been hands-on, he's been down there, he sees what's going on. But people give me a bunch of crap because after a year, and then I was asked, why did I take so long when I came in a year ago? My question, this rhetorical question, is why did it take the county so stinking long from 2002 until now to get it done? To me, it hasn't cost me, it's costing me money out of my own pocket, but I did it, and it saves the taxpayers a million dollars.
All right, Mr. Roberts, where are we at today? Where are you at? You've, you've made your point.
I can't, I can't do any more on it because I don't have the authority. In order to have a meeting the other day...
I can answer that question.
Mr. Troxell had to be there.
Well, let's let Commissioner Rawls answer that.
So last Wednesday, Thursday, Mr. Troxell, Travis and myself met at my office, we got the Army Corps of Engineers on the phone. As I expressed last week, I'm very frustrated with this because it feels to me like there's impediments that we can't control, and in this case, it's the Army Corps of Engineers. They, they took this landing from a wooden landing to a concrete landing and issued a permit to allow that. Now we're going back saying it can't be in concrete, it has to be in wood. The problem is, they were looking for a different design, and they said, has DOT approved this? The answer is yes. Okay, we need the mean high and low tide marks on the plans. Mr. Troxell that afternoon had that over to them. Then they said they have to send this off to an archaeologist to make sure that there's nothing under, underneath the landing area that's archaeologically significant to the state of Florida. And if, if he clears it, then we'll move forward. So she didn't, she can't, she said there's one archaeologist in Florida, they don't know how fast he can respond. Travis submitted a bunch of documentation that shows this was done back in like 2002 or 2004, but the Army Corps has not responded since, at least not that I've seen. So it, you know, this thing has just been kind of a calamity, and there's no reason to point fingers at this, at this juncture. It's moving forward, it looks like we're going to be able to get it done. I reached out to Pride the other day. If you're not familiar with them, Pride Enterprises oddly enough has a lumber mill, and they pressure treat, and they pressure treat for water contact. So I sent them a takeoff based on the plans that were submitted. I should have a price the next couple of days. We can buy the materials, as we discussed, directly from Pride. It, a lot less than anybody else is going to supply, but right now, as we sit, lumber is up about 200% more than it was this time last year. So I think the material costs, we should expect the material costs to go up. I don't think the labor is going to be any higher, but obviously, it would be foolish of us to think that we can get it for less. But, you know, right, right now, this thing's moving as fast as it can, but it's sitting on the desk of somebody at USAC.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls, for the input.
I did talk to...
Mr. Robert, Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this type of frustration that you're experiencing at the moment is exactly where the candy comment came from. It didn't come from what you're doing, Travis. This whole event is like a bad piece of candy. It is. The longer you chew on it, the nastier it tastes. I'm not making comments about what you're doing. I think you're doing wonderful by stepping out and doing your very best, but let's set the record straight. We had $500,000, and I, it's broad terms, a grant to fix this, and you came to us and you said that you thought you could do it for 50 or less. I think it started out at 35, but then it had to go up to, to additional engineering and what have you. So we've been trying to work a long way, and we're not trying, this Commissioner's not trying to pressure you to do anything, Travis. I respect you for taking your hands-on attitude and trying to do something here. So I'm not trying to pressure you, I'm not trying to make it happen quicker, I'm not. I'm just trying to make sure that we're moving forward because we did give up, that weren't money that we're not getting back, a $467,000 grant to allow you to do this because you said you thought you could do it for around 50 or less. Well, it's probably going to be more than that, and I understand, I'm in the business, too. Materials goes up, and the engineering was higher than what it was, what we agreed to pay, and I don't think we've agreed to pay that anyhow.
I actually spoke to the engineer, and I told her, because I, I have a relationship with, with that company, I said, as far as I'm concerned, that wasn't agreed upon, and if you didn't get it right the first time, I don't get paid extra money when I mess things up. So she said she would modify the invoice.
Okay. Well, that's good. So anyhow, that's where the bad candy comment came from, it didn't have anything to do with you whatsoever, is that the overall thing is just not quite going like we were hoping to go. Even you, you got to admit, is not going like we were hoping it would go because of all the going up and coming down and having to see different people, and now we got to go to an archaeologist. This is the government, and things happen. But like I said, I commend you for trying, I really do. And I commend Mr. Rawls for joining guns we and try to come up with a solution to a problem that's been going on for a long time. So anyhow, with that being said, Mr. Chairman, that's the only thing I wanted to bring out, is we gave up a pretty good grant here.
One, one question was asked, you, you mentioned the barge the other day, I meant to pull that out of you. What, what's, you, the barge is completely correct?
The barge is done. Yeah, that was also mentioned, that you guys didn't know if there was a barge or even a boat or anything. There've been a boat there since 1918. There's four standby boats to take this thing done. The barge has been completely redone. Matter of fact, we're painting it this Saturday. If anybody wants to show up and help paint it, we got 100 gallons of paint the St. John's Ship Building donated to repaint that thing. So barge is almost 100 years old, you know. And yesterday, I did have a conversation...
You, you mentioned, um, the barge yesterday. I meant, I, I meant to pull that out of you. What, what's, you, the barge is completely correct?
The barge is done. Yeah, that was also mentioned, that you guys didn't know if there was a barge or even a boat or anything. There'd been a boat there since nineteen eighteen. There's four standby boats to take this thing done. The barge has been completely redone. Matter of fact, we're painting it this Saturday. If anybody wants to show up and help paint it, we got a hundred gallons of paint that St. John Shipbuilding donated to repaint that thing. So barge is almost a hundred years old. You know, and yesterday, I did have a conversation yesterday afternoon at four-twenty-three in the afternoon with a lady from the Army Corps of Engineers. She did get the paperwork, which was already in the files, where the archaeologists had already been there. The geotecs, all the divers and everything have been there. That's the file that she didn't know existed in the county. She did get that file. She is talking to archaeologists. She has a meeting today with him at three o'clock, and she's supposed to get back with Mr. Troxel, who I commend as, he got thrown in the middle of this thing, you know, unlike the, you know, the county. But there is one comment that, you know, you said, and I agree with that, that you can't go back and change things. But at the end of the day, bees don't try to convince flies that honey tastes better than crap. You know, this thing just needs to move forward. It's, it's gone on way too long. I've done everything that I could possibly do. Now it's left in the hands, and the, the, when Commissioner Rawls and I talked to, was it the DEP last year? They changed the, they changed the permit just like that. In fact, there's been a permit, and I gave the lady from the other day all the way back to two thousand and two for the permit, and then it got redone and redone and redone. And by the way, the grant had gotten lost in twenty-eighteen. It was already flushed. The other grant that you guys were going after was an extension on it.
It seems like this thing just got.
Mr. Rawls, hang on. Mr. Pickens had his light on.
Yeah, and Travis said, "I think all the commissioners want to thank you for your efforts." This thing is just, has kind of been a bad apple the whole time, you know? Not enough money to do it in concrete, and we decided to go with you, would do it in wood, and then COVID hit. We just had a lot of different obstacles, a- and now archaeologists, that, you know, we, like you say, I hope that some of that work's been done. I looked at the Georgetown, the Drayton Island Ferry the other day, and it looks very simple to build that. It's just amazing that all the engineering that has to go into this, that's just gonna have passenger cars and light trucks go across. So we appreciate your efforts. We just want this to move forward to finally get this thing, finally get this thing finished.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls.
This thing started with a storm, and it's just, the storm has continued to brew since, and it's been the perfect storm of everything. COVID's slowing things down. Um, Army Corps is very slow to respond. They, I don't think that they're, they're, they're really into this project because it's, this is more of a pain. Even FDOT said, "This isn't a bridge." If it was two feet shorter, we wouldn't even have this conversation. So, um, but it can't, and I, I think it, we need to get this thing preserved in perpetuity, that it will be a wooden structure, that it is the, the second oldest ferry landing in the U.S., from what we're being told, and the oldest in Florida, and, um, put this as maybe part of our trail system. But, uh, hopefully, that we never have to have this conversation again.
Well, you know, when I first got here, the conversation was the Black Bear Scenic Highway. And paving from nineteen down through the forest. And then that all went crazy. I mean, think, look, look what happened with forest roads, you know, in the conversation. So, yeah, I, I think there's a future here. Mr. Roberts, we thank you for coming today. We appreciate it, and we're gonna move on, but keep us informed of anything that happens that you wanna.
I just have one last thing to say here. I know it wasn't this county commissioner that created this thing with Fort Gates, and I'm not blaming anybody here. I think you guys have stepped up and actually doing the right thing to preserve this piece of history. I mean, when you got something that's older than the White House or our constitution, that's a great asset for Putnam County. So thank you, gentlemen, for what you're doing. I've gotta get going. I've got chemo I'm going through, and I have to be up in Jacksonville. But thank you, guys.
Thank you for your service.
Stay out of the sun if you can, then.
Yeah.
You know, as much as you can.
As far as I know.
Wants to help paint, meet you down at Fort Gates Ferry.
Uh, it's gonna be a St. John Shipbuilding.
St. John Shipbuilding. What time's that? Will they?
Eight o'clock in the morning on Saturday.
On their facility?
Yes, sir. They're allowing special permission this time. They've got it set down by the water. It looks really great. The whole bottom, this is a barge that's eighty, almost a hundred years old. That still pushes that thing across the river. As far as an update on the boat, Too Windy, that's, was put, was built in eighteen ninety-nine, commissioned in nineteen eighteen. A gentleman stepped up, Mr. Bob Brighter, up in Jacksonville, and paid for the motor to be completely redone so we can preserve that motor and that transmission.
Well, let me say this. There is no better relaxation to take that ferry across the river, either coming or going, whatever way you wanna go, and sit out there on a beautiful sunny Florida day and go across the river. That, that's a, a unique opportunity for, for our citizens and our visitors in this county. We do appreciate it. We'd be praying for your.
We're gonna, when it gets done, we're having a grand opening. I'd like to invite you guys to be down there. There's gonna be bands and stuff, and, uh, you guys can all cut the ribbon at the same time to get this thing up and running again.
That would be awesome.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Appreciate your work on that. Okay, is there any other public comment on agenda items only? Seeing none, we're gonna move to our number six, our consent agenda. Commissioner Rawls, is there any items you'd like to pull?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
And I have none. The chair will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we, uh, pass the consent agenda items A through L. HI, excuse me.
HI, okay. We have a proper motion to pass the consent agenda items A through I. Do we have a second?
Second.
A proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We're not gonna wait for our ten o'clock planning meeting. We're gonna go right into codes enforcement. Mr. Moore, are you in the audience? Yes, page seventy-five on your agenda. We'll start there.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Go right ahead, sir.
First case is two thousand twelve, five sixty-five. Address is two-one-six Lake Shore Road. The property owner's name is Modern Keystone Properties. Violation was high grass and weeds. The original fine.
I think I'm on the wrong one. Cecil Long is our first.
Oh, he's our first one?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And case number two thousand fourteen, seven-six-six. Address is six-five-seven County Road three-zero-eight-B. Property owner's name is Cecil Long Jr. The violation was unpermitted demo, and the original fine amount was fifty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars. Total cost of enforcement action was two thousand one-hundred-and-ninety. Property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant, and the owner's requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Thank you. Is Mr. Long in the audience today?
No.
All right. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I know that what we're usually doing here is, um, is we're dropping administrative fees and, and, uh, trying to remain consistent. All three of these cases today gave me a little bit of heartburn over the, the original thing that we're trying to do. Number one is, is, um, this codes case is an unpermitted demolition. Now, if I wanna tear down my shed, I think I should, or my house or whatever, I truly think that I should have to pull a demo permit. But if I don't, I don't think I should be fined fifty-four thousand dollars because I tore down my house and didn't pull a demo permit. Now, if I did something that raised public health issues, or if I did something that was detriment to the community, that would be different. I don't think that's the case here. And I know that you weren't here when this happened, Mr. Moore, but this one here gives me some heartburn. I don't think you should have to pay fourteen-hundred-and-forty dollars, which is what it would be. I think he should have to pay a double pimp permit fee, like anybody else should have if they had done it back when the day then when it was supposed to have come. This is not where he had an unsafe structure that he didn't do anything about. This is where he went and tore something down to try to come into compliance and didn't, probably didn't know that he needed a, a demo permit. And then when he didn't pull one, somebody told him, and who knows what happened. But really? Because you didn't pull a fifty-dollar demo permit, it's fifty-four thousand dollars in fines, and now we're gonna reduce it to fourteen-forty? This one here gives me heartburn, Mr. Chairman. It really does. I think that this should be, that this should be reduced to the cost of a double permit, which is what it should have been in the first place because he didn't pull the permit.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, this one, um, and I personally know Mr. Long, and I know, um, that there were some signed, uh, certified letters, I guess, at a particular, um, address, and he did not sign them, and he did not get them. I truly am telling you that Mr. Long, if he knew about this, that he would've come taking care of it. He might not have agreed with what he had to do, uh, but he would have, as you can see in his letter. So this one bothers me also. So I, I'm in agreement of a, of a double permit. Has he already paid for one permit?
Yes, sir.
Done that?
Yes, sir.
So a double permit. Um, so I, I'm in agreement at also.
Thank you. Mr. Rawls?
And I, I concur, and, you know, my, my thought was that this really should not have been handled through code enforcement. This should have been an action through the, um, building department. The building official really has purview here. If they pulled the permit, that was the county's opportunity to charge, um, because they pulled the permit after the fact, obviously. That would have been when the county would have penalized them and charged them the double, which is what everybody else would have been charged. So I, I stand firmly with, uh, Commissioner Turner and Pickens. I, I think we, this, this case should be dropped entirely, um, and, and should be concluded that the, that a permit was, um, pulled. I, I assume that they complied with all the conditions of the permit, and, and, and that's been closed. Otherwise, I'm sure people are doing unpermitted work every single day here. I watch people walking out of Home Depot and Lowe's with water heaters and windows. And, and if we're gonna get that deep in the weeds, you're gonna be a very busy man. So that, I would make a motion that we drop this case entirely, um, close the case out, and, and let it be stated that it was concluded with the permit issuance.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rawls to drop the case entirely. Um, do we have a second?
I'd be happy to second it, uh, under discussion.
Thank you. We have a proper second. Now discussion. Mr. Turner?
I have no problem doing this whatsoever, but I just wanna make sure that we're not setting some kind of a precedence or something. Instead of dropping the case altogether, could we reword the motion that says that we're not gonna charge any additional fees, and then the case goes away on its own, and that's the end of it? Because if, I'm afraid if we do away with it whatsoever, that we're gonna open the floodgates for people coming in the door and wanting us to just drop their case from now on into the future instead of just using this opportunity to do the right thing, which is what I think we're doing this way by charging zero.
I would have no problem amending that. Um, but I would ask that, what, what is a normal procedure when, um, somebody discovers that somebody's done unpermitted activity? Is the building, is building department not involved at that point?
No, that's a, that's a, a regular code violation. It's un, unpermitted work. It's twelve-point-oh-two. It's Land Development Code.
Okay.
That's not the building department.
Okay. So the, the remedy wouldn't be running up sixty-five thousand dollar, or I'm looking at the next case, fifty-seven thousand dollars with the fines.
By law, we have to open a case, and we have to send them a letter and give them opportunity to pull a permit for their work.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Moore, um, from what I'm trying to gather here, if, if someone was caught doing unpermitted work, they would pay a fine of double? Is that how that would be handled?
Yes, sir. They'd pay it after the fact permit.
And it would still go to codes case, or that, that would just solve the problem?
No, as soon as they pull the permit, the case would be closed.
Okay, so in this case, had the building department collected double on the permit for the demo, it would have solved the problem, and there wouldn't have been a case, a period?
Not exactly. No, sir. You, you pull a permit, but it's your responsibility to make sure the permit gets final. You have to call for an inspection. It says it on their paperwork. They're responsible for, call for an inspection, and they're responsible to make sure the building department finals the permit. Once the bill, once the bill, the permit's final.
Using Mr. Rawls' analogy, standing outside of one of our local stores, watching somebody buy windows, following them home and going, "You don't have a permit." They come in here on Monday and get a permit. We're gonna charge them double for that permit because they were doing unpermitted, but we're not gonna open a codes case.
If we didn't catch them, no, sir, we can't charge them after the fact fee.
Only if they started the work and they were caught by the building department. Otherwise, you can buy all the material. You won't stock it in your garage and then go pull a permit before you start the work. So.
Yes, sir. They have to be caught.
Depends on the scenario, how.
Pictures have to be taken, so.
All right. Mr. Rawls, do you want to amend your motion?
I'll, I'll amend the motion, uh, to reflect that we, uh, reduce the case to, uh, whatever they paid for permit fees, double permit.
He, he, he paid it.
Okay, so, um.
It's been paid, and it's been final. So.
Okay, so my question, I just.
So just one permit fee or two?
No, he's, they've already paid the double permit fee apparently. Sometimes it's waived.
He, he, this is, was, this was his third permit. He paid for a demo permit, and he didn't call for an inspection, and it expired. Then he bought another demo permit, and he didn't call for an inspection, and it expired. So I called him, and I said, "Look, I need you to take care of this."
I'm absolutely.
He's paid three.
Rawls, whatever the man's paid to date, I think we penalized the hell out of him already for this issue. And I think it should go away. It's just a matter of, we don't want it to dismiss it, because if we do, then it would open a can of worms. But I think whatever he's paid to date, he's been penalized enough.
Mr. Rawls' motion is to reduce the, the penalty down to what the permit fee he's already paid. Do I have a second on the Mr. Rawls' amended motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next case, Mr.?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we leave this one, I just want everybody to understand, we're not setting a new precedence here. This, we're just doing the right thing when it's time to do the right thing. This is, that's all we did today.
I agree.
Can I ask a question real quick before we move on? Is it not possible for you guys to have a, an enough autonomy, um, to be able to come to us in a case like this? Where you've got this huge fine, we're obviously looking at a reduction, you recommend a reduction, to say, "Oh, by the way, um, this was, this was taken care of on this date when the permit was issued and closed out."
I don't think they have that autonomy to do that. Mr. Suggs, would you like to expound?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, once the case goes in front of the special magistrate, there's a finding, uh, that is then recorded. If he, and if there's any fines, uh, assigned to that finding, then when a, uh, citizen or property owner wants to come and make a request for a reduction, recension of a fine, that has to go in front of the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. You may proceed.
Next case is two thousand thirteen, four-seventy-five. The address is two-one-six Lake Shore Road. Property owner's name is Modern Keystone Properties. The violation was unsafe structure. The original fine amount was sixty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Total cost of enforcement action was two thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant, and the owner's requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is the applicant here, Mr.?
He's not here.
Philip Barretella?
No, sir, he's not here.
Mr. Turner?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I noticed that this case and the next case is actually the same structure.
Yes, sir.
Um, I understand the unsafe structure portion of it in the first one, but why did we, I know you weren't here, but but from the records or whatever, could you tell why they opened a second case for high grass or weeds or whatever instead of just making that far, part of the first case? Is that a different violation? So they did a different case altogether?
It's a different violation, sir. Yes, sir. They, they first did, the high grass and weeds was first. And then the second case was the unsafe, when they went out there and noticed it was open and accessible.
Even though this is not very nice-looking structure whatsoever currently, it is in compliance, as far as we're concerned, as ordinance?
It's secured, yes, sir.
It's secured?
Completely secured. That makes it compliant.
Okay, so it's not livable, and it's not, it's just secured?
As of right now, it's not livable from what we saw, right?
So on an unsafe structure, these are probably questions that ought to be asking Mr. Selfie, but anyhow, on an unsafe structure, um, it just has to be secured? It can, it to be back in compliance again?
Unsafe structure, there's several unsafe structures. You have unsafe for electrical, um, unsafe for various reasons. This was just open and accessible. So if they just secured it so nobody can get in it and get hurt, then that makes them compliant.
And that was done by the previous owners, not the new owners who went in there and secured the property?
The new owners just did it. Mr. Mr. Barretella, they took care of it.
And I know it's a different codes case, but on the next one, the same property, if we could, if I could have a little latitude.
You may have some.
Then they went and mowed the grass finally. So basically, it was an abandoned structure that went up for tax deed. New, new people came in and purchased tax deed from whoever bought it at the sale, and they can, went in and secured the property and mowed the grass.
Yes, sir.
And, okay. All right, I think that's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right. Any further comments? Mr. Rawls?
I think I understand where Mr. Turner is going. I just, I'm, why does this rise to two fines?
For an unsafe structure. If it's open and accessible, someone could get in and get hurt. If somebody, the county representative sees that it's open and accessible, it makes it an unsafe structure per Florida statute 162. I'm required to place a placard on it and open a case. And contact the owner. If they don't secure it, then I have to proceed with the case.
Okay.
So basically, every violation stands on its own?
Yes, sir.
If you will, and they all start, they can start at different dates because that's?
Yes, sir.
Grass might not have been high when it was open.
Correct.
Gotcha. Mr. Turner?
Yeah. You know, this is probably one of those cases where we can't, that I don't feel like we can deviate. I'm just not sure, you know, if they had two violations, I just, I guess, let me back up a little. I guess what I'd like to do is maybe look at the ordinance. If we have an active Code's case that's generating $65,000 in fines going on at the present time and somebody doesn't mow their grass or it grows up in weeds or whatever, I'm not so sure that we shouldn't figure out a way that we could tag that on to the existing Code's case instead of opening up a complete new file and going to the magistrate again and do it all?
I understand what you're saying, sir. Let me, let me explain it more. If we open up a case for high grass and weeds and we take it to the special magistrate, we've already had an order. We can't add another violation on a case that already has an order. We have to open up a new case for that violation.
Okay, so that's not something we can change the ordinance and just ask the magistrate to add it on to the existing case?
No, sir, that's not possible.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Now, if we hadn't taken it to the special magistrate for high grass and weeds and we go out there and it's unsafe, we can add to the case and take it one time.
So you can do two at one time as long as you take them both at the same time, but if you've already got an order on the first one, you have to add a second one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's clearer to me now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You explained what you explained to me this morning, but in further detail. So if you took two Code's cases at the same time to the special magistrate, it could do two at one, but if you take one, you can't add another one?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, I'm clear with that.
Mr. Rawls?
I think this is where we need to do our job at some point and make some changes because logic dictates that if somebody's got a $65,000 fine facing them, you're not going to get them to mow their grass by charging them another $62,000. That just, you know, they're gone. So I think part of the problem that we're experiencing, and maybe it's because we're so far down the food chain before we see this, is that a lot of time is elapsing before we're taking action on these and the cases are building up huge numbers. I mean, $65,000 for an unsafe structure, that could have been resolved for $1,600, you know, with some plywood and labor or less. But I think this is where we need to get you guys enough help and, I don't want to use the word manpower, I don't know what we, power, just enough power to be able to, you know, act on this quick, more quickly and engage the public and engage us sooner than, so. You know, it's frustrating because somebody comes in and buys a property and best case, you know, right now they're looking at upwards of $3,000 and it's not cool.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think this is a classic case of things changing over a period of time. Back years ago, when this started, they would put fines on properties that they had no other way of doing anything with and obviously this was one of them because it went to tax deed, so it's probably a piece of property that somebody either didn't want, family didn't knew they had, there wasn't no family, whatever. So there was no other way to deal with it. So they would put them on here and then after a certain period of time, and then I'm speaking back from when I was chairman of the Code's Board many years ago, after a fine got a lot less than this, they would then, if there was no other way to fix the issue, they would go in there and foreclose on the property if they had the money to do it and then abate the property and turn around, either own it or sell it. Back in those days, they'd usually just inventory it because they didn't have the aggressive program we have at the present time to get, try to get rid of all these type of properties. So I think I can clearly see what's happened over a period of all these years and how it got to the space that it is right now. But, you know, the good part about this is it has been secured, it has been cleaned up, it has been whatever. And so on this one, while I wish it had been one case, it isn't. I think we still have to remain consistent with our previous deals and on these exact tax deed properties and just drop the administrative fine on the property. And on this particular case, I think it would be $1,496 if we had dropped the administrative fine. So I'll move that, Mr. Chairman.
A proper motion by Commissioner Turner to drop the fine to $1,496 if paid within 90 days, is that correct?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we don't need an explanation on the last case. We've already kind of debated that one, so the chair will entertain a motion on that case.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reduce the fine on case number 2012-00565 to $1,700, which is reducing the administrative monthly fee as we've done previously.
We have a motion by?
Within 90 days.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Turner to reduce the fee down to $1,700 if paid within 90 days. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it. Mr. Moore, before you leave, I want to make a comment. When I first became a commissioner, this stuff gave me heartburn. And there are people in our community who came to me and said, "Do not reduce these fees." Well, I hate to say that's kind of not right, but it is. Because I think we're almost chasing people out of trying to do the right thing and they go, "You know, I'm $30,000 in fees on a $10,000 piece of property. I'm out of here." And I wish there was a way that we could, we could look at this more reasonable to that extent. But having somebody even thinking of paying $122,000 in fees on a $10,000 piece of property, I wonder how many people we do chase off by saying, "I'm done with that. I can't do it," so.
Yeah, absolutely obscene.
Mr. Turner, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir, and like I said, with the, with this case is the perfect storm too. I mean, it just really is. It shouldn't never allowed to get this high before the county went in and foreclosed on it and sold it on our list with, say, "You clean it up within 90 days if you, you know, and you get it."
Right.
So, you know, the program we have going now should help prevent these type of things in the future if we can get our hands on them a little bit quicker. So I know foreclosure costs are high, but if we could identify some of these properties in the future before they ever go to tax sale, we have a lien on them. We could possibly even go ahead and foreclose on them depending on the cost and put them out on the street for sale and make someone clean them up within 90 days, which is what we've been doing anyhow.
I agree.
So.
Mr. Rawls?
Is there anything we can do in our ordinance that would allow a case like this where you have somebody who's not part of the problem at the beginning? They come in, they buy the property, they clean it up. They're the solution. To get the fines reduced prior to coming to us, even if there's, because the magistrate decision against the property, is against property, I understand that. But now you've got a new property owner. So is there a way to, for us to put something in there that, you know, think about what Commissioner Harvey said, it would send a signal to the investing public that might be looking to take these kind of cases on and, or properties on and say, "Hey, if this county's willing to work with me, I'll take the risk and spend some money on it."
Well, I understand what you're saying and I don't disagree, but I just don't know who you'd give that decision to.
Somebody to my left.
Well, once it gets, once it gets to, once it gets to a certain level, I think it almost has to come to the board to be resolved or reduced once the magistrate has put in an order. So, I mean, we could strive to try to get them here quicker, but if they're not in compliance, we're not going to give them a reduction.
I mean, as far as, if, just to get something out in the investment world or people that are looking to buy their first piece of property, get, you know, send a message to the world, "Hey, we're willing to, we're willing to help these fines down and not, don't look at that big number." Or even the number you came in with this morning, there's, you know, if, I'm not saying that we have to guarantee we do everybody, but, and let the world know that we're willing to negotiate to get these properties cleaned up. That's our ultimate goal is to get the light.
I think they're, I think they're being told right now, if they come in, once they find out about it, that the commission has been very cooperative in trying to reduce the fines. The problem is, I think, is that most people, once it goes through the tax deed process, and I'll guarantee you, this fellow bought this piece of property, if the guy that bought the tax deed even knew there was a fine on it, he didn't go and say, "Oh, by the way, I'm going to sell this to you for $5,000 or $10,000 or whatever the case may be, but there's a $120,000 worth of fines on it," he wouldn't have been able to sell it for a nickel.
Right.
You know, so I don't know that you can fix that with doing it ahead of time, you know, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right, we're done with that. We're going to take a three-minute recess.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
That is here today needs to understand that we're only talking about those two corners. The northwest and the very small southwest corner. The rest of this is already ag. So what happens in the future, I may or may not be for, probably not, but though I'll never see it again because it won't come back to this board, it'll go to ZBOA. But they already have the right to do that on their property if DEP allows them to do it, and they got a lot of hoops to jump through to get there if they decide to go that route. But I just wanted to say again that we're only talking about those two small corners is what they have asked to change back to ag, just the northwest and that very, very small southwest corner that's across the highway even, I think.
Okay, good. All right, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant, um, and, and please come up and state your name and address for the record. And again, we're going to keep our comments to the land zoning, not anything else.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Council. For the record, my name is Michael Woods, Law Firm Cobb Cole, in our Deland office at 231 North Woodland Boulevard in Deland, here today as well as Ms. Husanyi, on behalf of the applicant. Really not much more to add from the staff report, and as I understand, Mr. Schnappstaller from my office was here before you last month. Happy to go through this process and answer any questions you may have today for this application, and just understand that as it moves forward, certainly there'll be neighborhood meetings in advance of any other applications that could go forward. So if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, so does anybody would like to speak in favor of this land change? Anybody here would like to speak in opposition to the land change? And only the land change. No biosolids will be mentioned here. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, okay?
Can I take my mask off up here?
You may.
Absolutely.
Is it in this coat, by the way? Hi, I've been here before and you guys were really nice to me. Thank you.
I remember you.
Yeah, my name is Janet Sornberger. I brought my children this time, and I am in opposition of the land change. I have probably annoyed all of you with my emails, and I have learned more in the past week or two about biosolids and this process. I know, I know, I know. Um, so I wrote up a lovely thing to say, but, um, gosh, this is so complicated, right? You know the thing that I keep thinking about the most are my children and things I don't want to talk about with them, like sex. I really don't want to talk to them about sex.
I think you just did.
So the thing about that is if I don't want my teenage children to have sex, then I'm not going to allow them to be locked up in their bedroom with their boyfriend or girlfriend, because I might say, no, I don't want that, but I'm allowing the prerequisite, the condition that facilitates it. And this is very relevant because that top left corner that's yellow is the closest to my house, it's the closest to the Floridian Aquifer, which apparently runs from Crescent Lake to St. John's River, and is a more vulnerable area. Now, I have also learned that in the field of water contamination, allegedly biosolids is like the bottom of the concern. Please, please, I know, I know.
But we're talking rural residential to agricultural.
So I learned that normal agricultural applications, like pesticides and fertilizers, are apparently a bigger threat than biosolid application, if done properly, which means that the special use permit is really not of my consideration when I talk to you guys right now. What is, is that I spent all of my money and all of my energy moving here to Putnam County to be surprised that the air is so fresh and the water is so clean, to buy land for my children to grow up and have a nice place to live. And I thought, you know, I really don't want that pooped on. Then I talked to tons and tons of water authorities, and they all said, honey, calm down, it's really not a big deal, like fertilizers and pesticides are a bigger deal, which means your decision today is a big deal, because that yellow corner is close to my drinking water, the closest. So if the rest of his, what's 303 minus 20, is that like 200 and, oh, gosh, 83 acres is used for agricultural, cool, protect my tiny 20 acres that's closer to my water by voting no today to keep all of our water just a little bit cleaner and our air just a little bit fresher from normal agricultural use, normal. I have other things to say at other meetings, but right now, that's real simple.
Again, if that happens, you will, you will be notified that there'll be a special ZBOA meeting.
Okay.
And they'll, they'll take public comments on what the use will be at that point. Right now, we're just going from rural residential to ag one and two. That's really all we're talking about. So if anything else happened, well, things are allowed in agricultural, don't get me wrong, but if anything like you're concerned about, that should come before the ZBOA, okay? Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I feel that there are greater risks at stake and greater than the word we're not allowed to talk about, and can you protect that little corner? Just that little bit? And if the alternative to agricultural use is the potential for rental properties, then by God, we're talking toxins or a place for my children to live that's not my bedroom when they grow up. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the majority of young adults that live in South Putnam have to move out of our great area. They're forced to go to Deland or St. Augustine, or live in their mom's trailer, or rent an RV. There's not rental property. So when I say to vote no against intensive agricultural use, I'm hoping that you'll also vote yes, and that maybe this nice landowner could build some houses that my kids could rent one day. That would be a huge blessing. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rawls, you have the floor.
Ma'am, what was your name again?
Oh, um, I'm Janet Sornberger.
Janet, um, I, I can absolutely sympathize where you are, and, um, this board is not apathetic. The, the land use going to agricultural, I understand what you're saying, could bring in pesticides and fertilizers. And one of the things that we're doing right now, we're cleaning up and changing our comprehensive plan, um, it, right off the bat, it describes Putnam County as being agrarian in nature, which means we're an agricultural community. It also, um, puts the onus on the farmers to be compliant, not with just EPA and DEP and all that, but also with, with our county and our nature itself. I, I, I think that as, as time goes on, University of Florida, with their IFIS program, has developed a lot of really good growing strategies and means and methods for agriculture to be safer for the environment and for our citizens. You know, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a builder. I'm loving what you're saying, you know, going from R1 to Ag 2, or Ag 1 is, is going the wrong direction in some cases.
It's going the wrong way.
And you're right, we absolutely have a huge need for housing here. And, and the ruralness of our nature makes it really difficult to attract anybody to come here and take a look at any development, because you don't have a lot of land that's readily available for development. The use of wells, septic tanks, present the same risks in, to the aquifer as farming if, if it's, if they're not done right.
Mm-hmm.
So I, um, I only say this to let you know that I'm, I, I agree with what you're saying, but this is a, a future land use category that they're asking to change from, and, and looking at the rest of the property, it makes sense to me as a commissioner to say, look, if you're squaring off the boundaries, that's fine. I don't know if somebody made a fat finger mistake with the highlighter when they, when they colored in the land use map, how they went across that corner, to me, it doesn't make sense, but it happened. And that's some of the things that we're trying to clean up right now in our comp plan and our future land use mapping, because the old ones didn't line up at all. It was very frustrating for development in Putnam County. So, um, I, I think that there's, like Commissioner Harvey said, there's an opportunity for you to go into ZBOA and discuss that with them, but if they're being good stewards of what's entrusted to them, and they're moving forward with agriculture, then they, they will probably, you, you probably will not have the nitrate loading that you're talking about. Um, and the, did they form the BMAP? I don't think they're in the BMAP here, are they? That, that doesn't sound familiar for some reason or not. Being, you're saying you guys are proximal to what part of the aquifer?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. Can you repeat it?
You're proximal to, um, one, a certain part of the aquifer.
Yeah, so in the past week or two, I've spoken to Commissioner Bill Pickens, Mr. Jim over here, multiple people with Florida Rural Water Association. I also took Mr. Pickens' advice and I contacted the DEP, spoken with them also. And according to Florida Rural Water Association, the 20 acres in question of being rezoned is in the closest, um, it's the closest to the wells of Mr. Bob of Lake Home of Water Association that serves 200 drinking water customers. And his well, according to his wellhead protection plan, is part of the Floridian Aquifer, and that aquifer reaches from Crescent Lake to St. John's River. And the area of his well is in an email that I sent to you guys where there's like brown and green, and the brown is the most vulnerable, and the green is just vulnerable. And that's not relative to just his well that I drink from, but to all people who have a well that drink from that water in between that huge region. So...
So what I would encourage you to do, DEP has a, a program, it's a B, BMAP, BMAP, and it's an acronym for...
Basin Management Action Plan.
Yep. You're, so there, the closest that we have to having anything in the BMAP region is in the northwest, or I'm sorry, the west area towards Gainesville.
Okay.
Um, and I guess, Jim, this is a question for you, are, should they be looking at that area to put that area in, maybe in a BMAP area? That might mitigate a lot of problems.
Well, we also have some in the east area too, so...
We do, we also have a total daily maximum load, a TMDL issue for Lake Crescent. So that's something that will fall under the purview of the Department of Environmental Protection if and when they evaluate permitting.
Okay.
Again, the Florida, Floridian Aquifer, we have an upper and lower aquifer, it's under all of us. It just depends on where it is at the time that you're drooling to it.
Okay.
So those wellfields are protected as well as, you know, everything to the DEP.
But let's stay on track here, because the, the bottom line is the landowner, we're moving from rural residential to ag, it might be in your lifetime that nothing happens on this piece of property, and very, that could be. Or it might be that the gentleman sells it and nothing happens. I mean, you never know. So we're sitting here speculating today. The, our decision today is to go from rural residential to ag, which would be less intensive in my opinion, if nothing ever happens to the land. So let's, let's, let's follow the land, let's keep an eye on things, but we're going to go from there, okay?
Okay. May I, may I say one more thing in response to what Commissioner Rawls said? I'm really tempted to agree with you and think that maybe I'm just wasting my time here.
No, you're not wasting your time at all.
I'm wasting your time.
This is not a waste of time.
The only reason I still came today is because I took Commissioner Pickens' advice and I called the DEP. And like, if I'm supposed to call them, not you guys, then let's call him, you know? But they looked up Lawrence Downs and his other company, American BioClean, and American BioClean, which is owned by Lawrence Downs, is in trouble with the DEP for dredging and filling wetlands.
Right.
And Mr. Jim assured me that any risk of agricultural use of the land would be minimized by the presence of wetlands.
All right, we need to be very careful, we really do, because again, we're only talking about going from rural to ag. We got to be careful what he said, she said, they might have said, it could be happening. That's for a different arena, and I don't mean to...
I understand. I'm not trying to be irrelevant. I guess I just wanted to reiterate that I don't want to risk intensive agricultural use.
I, I hear you.
Thank you very much for hearing me. I appreciate it.
And listen, you're always welcome. This is your building.
That's right.
Trust me, this, we work for you, and it's not the other way around.
It's a little intimidating.
Don't be intimidated, we're not scared.
Put our pants on one leg at a time, just like you do.
We're not scary. I have a T-shirt that says Larry's Not Scary, okay? It's, we're not scary, I promise you.
But he is weird.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am weird. All right. Would anybody else like to speak against the rezoning from RR to Ag? All right, seeing none, we're going to close the public portion of that meeting. And Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion that we go with staff's recommendation to, to rezone from RR to Agricultural 1, ordinance 2021-06. Does that cover it?
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens to, to go with staff recommendation for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion on this matter?
Yes, sir. Under discussion, Mr. Turner.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
I'd just like to reiterate...
Please speak into your mic. I'm sorry.
Did somebody say they couldn't hear me? Okay. Better? Okay, sorry. Never had that really said to me before, that people couldn't hear what I said. I'm usually very loud in the room. I, uh, I need to reiterate again that this is just the two corners, and this is actually downgrading the, the intensity of this zoning from a rural residential to an ag. Now, I know that, that the spray field is the issue, even though we're not supposed to be talking about it, Mr. Turner.
If you didn't say biosolids.
I know that that's the real issue here, but they could also go in there and put in a subdivision that with, with septic tanks and wells that would have a lot more impact than the spraying some treated affluent on this area if they ever got the permitting to do it in the first place. This is not an easy step for them to get there. So like I said, I just wanted to reiterate, we're only talking about those two corners.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, and also, it, it is just the, the two corners, and as I said when I spoke to pretty much everybody, is that you need to follow this and stay in touch with the DEP about how if this permit, if he applies again and the permit moves forward, where you can participate with your opinions on whether you're for it or not, and then definitely it would go for the, the ZBOA. So you just need to stay in touch. Y'all have a group now, y'all are grouped together. So I recommend that if you're concerned about this, and I understand that you are, is that you stay in touch. If you have any questions, you can, you can contact me and I'll, I'll do what I can to, to keep you informed of how the process will move forward, if it's going to move forward after this.
And let me say this, if something happens to the land that needs a special use permit, signs will be posted. You will know what's going to take place on it, probably before we even know that. So, I mean, not the zoning department, but the Commissioners, but, you know, keep an eye, because it has to be done. Mr. Rawls?
I'd just like to reiterate, I think if you get with Mr. Toriano, get with DEP, get them to take a look at your area and see if you don't fall into the, under the BMAP conditions, and if they draw you in, I think that would be a game changer for that, that area, so. But also with what Commissioner Turner said, if you had a bunch of septic tanks here, you'd have the exact same thing happening just in small dosing tanks versus a large spread field.
All right. Commissioners, we have a proper motion on the floor, proper second. We've had discussion, any further talk? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign the ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Toriano. We'll move on to the next, the extension of the Internet Cafe Moratorium.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jim Toriano, again, for Planning and Development Services. Uh, I'd like to start out with an ordinance, reading it by title if I may, then a brief discussion.
You may.
Ordinance number 2021-007, reading it by title, An Ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, Extending the Temporary Moratorium...
Please. If we can be quiet in the auditorium, please? Go ahead, Jim.
That's okay.
I'm going to begin again. Uh, An Ordinance of the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, Extending the Temporary Moratorium on a New Site Plan Approval and Any Other Official Action of Putnam County, Having the Effect of Permitting or Allowing the Construction and/or Operation of the Following Businesses Using Slot Machines or Slot Machine-like Equipment or Simulated Gambling Devices Within Putnam County. Game Rooms, Arcades, Internet Cafes, Sweepstakes, Redemption Centers, or Establishments for 60 Days and Providing an Effective Date. Mr. Chair, if I may, the board has, on many occasions over the past few years, extended our Internet Cafe or Simulated Gambling, Gaming Device Moratorium. As most recently in November of last year, you extended it 120 days because that allowed staff the opportunity to move forward with a draft ordinance. We did move forward with that ordinance, and on January the 27th, this board did hear the ordinance, the draft changed to the Land Development Code, and took a different direction. Because of that, we had to go back and recreate a new ordinance. However, our time is expiring tomorrow, so today the request to this board is to extend this Internet Cafe or Simulated Gam, Gaming Device Moratorium in an additional 60 days. We are going to the Planning Commission tomorrow with the updated version, and then we'll be coming to this board on the 23rd of March, and then the final hearing on April the 13th. So it does give us plenty of time using the 60-day extension. And, Mr. Chair, that's the request of staff for an extension of 60 days based on the ordinance read, uh, read by title.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Turner has a question?
Okay, uh, when the, uh, the County Commission took up, by the way, I don't have an issue moving it to the 60 days at all, but I do think this is an appropriate time to discuss what we're doing. So I understand that we're trying to, we have decided to, instead of calling it the Internet Cafe, we're going to call it a gaming facility, or whatever term it is that you're trying to get us switched over to, I get it, and that we're going to go that route to say that we're going to ban it, ban illegal gambling facilities, or whatever name it is that y'all are using, and I have no problem with going there. What I do have a problem with is if we're going to try to ban something that's explicitly mentioned in the state statute that you can't ban, which is, I think, adult ga, adult gaming or Internet Cafe, there's some word in the state statute that says specifically you can't do that. So I understand that we're going to try to switch over a little bit and call it something different, and we're going to try to like ban the illegal ones, well, we weren't trying to make them legal to start with. Well, um, so how it got from where we were, sent it to the Planning Commission and all that, that we're going to ban everything that's morally wrong by our moral compass? I don't know exactly how we got there, I don't. But we did, and so that's fine. But we were never trying to allow illegal activity. This commission had said that explicitly right up front, that we were not trying to condone illegal activity, but it seemed like every time this conversation was had, it was, ooh, the commission's going to condone illegal activity. Well, that's not what we were trying to do, ever. In the fir, when we sent it to the, the Planning Commission to start with, we asked them to restrict it, we asked them to do everything in their power to, to make it to where it was placed in the right place, but we were taken, we were under the advice at that time, and I'm still under the advice, that you can't ban whatever the word is specifically in the state statute you can't ban. So if we're going to try and go a different route and, and call it ele, illegal whatever, or adult gaming, or we're going to change a name where it's not mentioned in the statute, okay, if that's what the board wants to do, but I think it needs to be said straight up front. I think it needs to be said, this board never said it was condoning illegal activity. That was what was, what was the, uh, put forward as, as an innuendo in this whole situation. The board never did that, not once. So, um, you know, if this board votes to carry this further, fine, but I think we had most of what you're asking to do, or what the, you're, not you, Jim, but what you're, uh, changing in the ordinance, most of the stuff, wasn't it already regulated in the existing ordinance? What is the difference between what we're, what we sent to the Planning Commission and got approved by them and then turned down, and what you're planning on doing? You said you kind of had it going to the Planning Commission. Hopefully it's not too early to ask because they haven't heard it yet, but what changes are you making that makes any difference at all?
It's, if I may, Mr. Chair, and maybe Mr. Commando might want to chime in here, but it, taking the guidance and direction of the board's decision at the last meeting is to ban all simulated gambling in unincorporated Putnam County. The original request was to regulate simulated gambling in unincorporated Putnam.
I don't think that to be true, Mr. Toriano. I'm not trying to be argumentative at all, but it was to regulate the, the, uh, legal Internet Cafes, that if they're, if they're doing simulated gambling, they're not legal. Is that correct?
Mr. Commando?
What am I missing?
Okay, let, let's just kind of walk through the timeline of what happened. What you said is 100% accurate. Where in the beginning, the intent of the regulation was to regulate and to, to guide Internet Cafes. We weren't even talking about gaming at that point. And we had a number of different conversations. The Sheriff's Office provided incredibly valuable input as to what their activities were around some of the locations of these facilities, both in the city and in the unincorporated parts of the county. And as we tried to craft an appropriate regulation for the Internet Cafes, some of the conversations at that point was a discussion and understanding between games of skill and games of chance. And this is how the process is supposed to work, by public comment coming in, by the owners, operators, as well as the employees of those different, um, facilities coming in. We then learned, and we learned mid-process, that this was not an issue of the game of skill versus game of chance. In fact, they were selling, at least the proposal that was presented to this commission and the Planning Commission, was that the owner, operators of these facilities were selling Internet time, but essentially it was a sweepstakes. And even though it's a sweepstakes, no different than Polisher's Clearinghouse, the concept was that they're really buying the time and the prize is coming as a sweepstakes prize. And the concern then came from your citizens, that what was happening is these are mimicking, or they're looking like slot machines, they're looking like game, game, gambling, and because of that, they're tricking people who are really prey to what is unlawful activity under the guise of it being something legal. So based upon the comments from your citizens and the direction from the Planning Commission, as well as the direction of this board, which is what Mr. Toriano had stated, that's where, in order to conform with your direction, we made the decision to not allow those facilities to trick your citizens, to try to prey on them and get their hard-earned money, some of, some of them on budgets, and not let them use the guise of a sweepstakes in a simulated gambling type environment.
Okay, now, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And I, I want to make it perfectly clear, I've never even been in one of these places before, so I am not the defender of this whatsoever, at all. But I just want to make sure that we're not bowing up to the state statute. So I under, I understand. Okay, so my question then would be, there's one of these type establishments that are specifically exempt in the state statute. It's like Internet Cafe, or it's, uh, something, correct? And so us changing the name to what we're changing it to, what are we going to, what are we going to do with somebody that comes in and they're not doing the illegal stuff for what we deem to be illegal?
You know, Commissioner, I, I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know what that would even look like. The legislature had banned Internet Cafes, and it's kind of the whack-a-mole syndrome where one thing gets taken care of and then something else pops up. For example, I mean, historically, and I, I think the Sheriff's Office made some good comments about this with the sheriff and Colonel Wells and Mr. Sharp, about the game of skill versus game of chance analysis, which is why through the public comment, they had asked for copies of the manuals that go with these machines, and we were told that they were essentially desktop computers, no different than what we used. So there isn't a manual, and there was a concern that there's a hidden switch or ability to access the programming that would change it from a game of skill to game of chance, and all beyond, again. So we think we solved that problem with the regulations that we had, had defined and regu, and drafted to propose, and then we learned that, well, we're, we're really not doing the game of skill versus game of chance, we're doing the sweepstakes. So just understanding the timeline and the iteration, I wish I could tell you what I think's going to come up next, but I just don't know at this point.
Good. I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
And I appreciate the, appreciate that, Rich.
Mr. Pickens?
I don't really know where I want to start with this, but as this Commissioner, I understood that this commission, I don't know if we actually voted on it, or we just had a consensus that we're moving it forward to the Planning Commission to come up with regulations for these Internet Cafes, right?
We voted.
We voted.
Okay, we voted.
We did.
Okay, so that was going, so that went to them, so they did their job and they sent it back to us, so I understood we were going to vote on that, so that didn't happen. So I'm kind of wondering where we got to that point where I came in here planning to, to vote on something that we've been asked to get together, we, we've put a moratorium on these things... We've put a moratorium on these things for the last two or three years, not pointing any fingers at whose fault that is. It's nobody's fault, it's all our fault. And then we're gonna vote on this, so we could have a process to start to regulate these things, to weed out the ones that don't comply, and the ones that are operating illegally, and the ones that, I guess, and I'm naive enough, I thought you could just go in there and get on the Internet, 'cause you don't have anything at your house to get on the Internet. I see people sitting in the library parking lot in Crescent City so they can get on their Wi-Fi and use a computer, so I assume that there were people that needed those services. But we ended up voting that down, and I took some heat in the newspaper about that, without this individual that did the editorial calling me to ask me out my opinion. He just said what my... He felt my opinion was. And I won't really say what I think about that.
I know, I feel like...
And I will address him. But now, we're gonna... We're sending it back to the Planning Commission as a ban. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so somewhere, if I followed all this, we've reworded something, correct?
Yes.
Why did we not have that wording at the beginning before we wasted the Planning Commission's time and everybody else's time? That's... I'm just asking that question.
Because we didn't know the model of what the plan was when we started down that road. That only came to light through the various iterations of public comment.
Okay. All right, so this going to... I understand extending the moratorium, we have to have more time. So this going to the Planning Commission to come back with a ban on whatever we're gonna ban, I guess, illegal gaming, we're gonna be able to do this without just putting a bull's eye on ourselves for getting sued?
The concept of the liability for being sued existed either way. It existed if we do nothing and just continue the moratorium like we had. Fortunately, now, we are actively working on this issue, and I think there's many hours of public meetings to demonstrate that. Whether you impose regulations as the original intended process was, or whether you ban simulated gaming, so you're subject to potentially being sued in any one of those arenas.
Okay, that's all I got right now.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls.
So just to recap a little bit what happened when we were here, we had several people take the podium and declared that these were not sweepstakes, that this was in... One of them actually said that they were gambling. And, you know, I think it was Tommy Curry that said it, and, you know, if they didn't do it here, they'll do it somewhere else. But another young lady got up and spoke, and I think Commissioner Harper was the one engaged her and said, "You're not going in there because you want a teddy bear." You know, they're going in there with the expectation to be able to wager money and walk out, in some cases with more than they walked into, and a lot of cases with less than they walked in with. But so that describes gambling, and we've taken a position as a community, it looks like, that we don't want illegal gambling. The Sheriff's Department has asked us to consider a ban. I agree with a ban for the simple fact that there is no regulatory agency that keeps somebody from going in and cheating. When I pull up to the gas pump and I see the sticker on there, and it says, "Do not remove," and it's been looked at by the Department of Agriculture, I know that when I'm putting a gallon of fuel in my tank, I'm not getting nine cents of gallon, I'm getting a full gallon, because there's a regulatory agency that go in there and they supervise the sale of fuel. If we had that in the state of Florida, I would have no problem whatsoever with these happening, but from what I'm being told, somebody has the ability to digitally flip a switch, flip the odds in favor of the House, and then you have a lot of vulnerable people in Putnam County who fall prey to this. I spoke to a city commissioner who himself was able to give personal testimony. I've talked to several people that have had... Family members that have fallen prey to this. So me personally, I think a ban is in order. There's no reason to allow this type of business activity in our community. There's a reason why other communities have done it, and I don't wanna set ourselves up as this dumping ground for this type of activity. We have enough things to deal with as a community. You know, we have a mental health and substance abuse issue we should be spending more time on than we do, and I personally think we've spent way too much time on this. We need to move this thing forward, get the ban in place, and then let's focus on something that's more substantive for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Turner?
Okay. Again, I wanna start by reiterating, I'm not for illegal activity in any way, shape, or form, but I am for shoving what I deem to be my morality down somebody else's legal throat. I have an issue with that. I think it's against... It is against the law, and I think it should be against the law, and that's what I'm trying to bring up here. I think we're dancing a fine line here between, I don't want any illegal gaming activity of any kind. I don't want any illegal activity. Hell, I wish Joe could sleep till noon, because there was nothing for him to do. I really do. But that's unfortunately not the facts. So what I don't wanna do here is I don't wanna put us in a position that I'm trying to put my morality on somebody else. You shouldn't try to sit in this seat and legislate morality. I don't think it's legal. If... I just don't believe it is. Now, I'm not saying that we should have illegal Internet gambling. I wish we didn't have it at all, but I don't want to... Man, I don't know a better way to put this than other than, we have an adult store in this county. I don't want an adult store in this county, but there's no way we can stop an adult store in this county. There's one over there in East Placa I have to drive by every day going home. I wish it wasn't there. I do. But I'm telling you, it is, and there's people that go there, and they're not doing anything that I'm aware of that's illegal. And I think that if we make the presumption as a board that all Internet Cafes or illegal gambling things, if it was a... If one has the ability to put a legal one in, for us to assume they're all illegal is an assumption that I don't think we should be jumping to. I just don't think it is. And so you can't assume that a business... You can't assume that a bar's gonna sell cocaine. You can't assume that, even if you know it might be happening. You can't just assume that all bars are gonna do it, 'cause one does. You just can't do it. So, you know, this thing gives me real heartburn here, it really does. I think we could regulate them, extensively regulate them, that we could extensively restrict them to areas that are appropriate if there is such an area, but really restrict them. And then, I understand, this is gonna make Joe grow hair, but there's gonna be...
Pick on, sir.
Then it's up to the Sheriff's Department to decide which one's legal and which one's illegal. If there is an illegal... A legal portion or a legal way that this could be done. If there's not, and Rich can tell me, and there's not a legal way that I know of you could have an Internet Cafe, then I'm done. Let's go that route, and everything's fine. But if there's a legal way that you could do these, then banning a legal activity, because some of them could be illegal, I think is not only wrong, I think that's illegal. So anyhow, and I'm not wanting to start a fight with Rich over it either, I just feel like... I just feel like that that's illegal for us to ban a legal activity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, if I could just answer that. We're not banning a legal activity. You're banning something that appears to be illegal. So the Internet Cafes could still open, in theory, as an Internet Cafe that's not under the window dressing of being a casino. So there are ways that they could still do it, and we're not telling anyone of those.
That's exactly what I needed to hear, Rich, is that statement right there, that we're not trying to regulate out of business or ban legal Internet Cafes, just illegal activity. Well, illegal activity's already banned, that's why Joe's got a job, is illegal activity in period. So we're trying... What are we trying to do? We're banning what, then? Because illegal activity's already banned by law. What are we banning? If we're allowing Internet Cafes, but we're banning illegal activity, that's already banned. It's called law.
Right. And what's happened is, so there are some scrupulous owners of some of these places of business that claim they have a legal activity, but like I said, the window dressing is that it's illegal. So where those businesses prey upon citizens and visitors to our county, we're banning that type of activity to make it illegal.
Mr. Rawls?
The whole purpose of the ban was to be able to give something to the Sheriff's Department, to be able to enforce our ordinances, and right now, they don't have the teeth that it takes to be able to go in and make a difference when they do find out that one of these establishments are operating illegally. So I think, again, the ban speaks for itself. It just gives our public the knowledge that we're protecting them, not closing businesses, not forcing businesses out. You can walk in and play arcade games in Walmart, they have a small arcade area, used to, and that was never illegal. You can drop a quarter in a machine and try to get a stuffed animal out of the crane game at Beef O'Brady's, or whatever it costs nowadays. That's not illegal. But what's being described to me, you know, and it's happening behind darkened windows for a reason, is nothing but shady illegal activity. I'm not imposing my morality on anybody. I don't have a stomach for gambling whatsoever, never have, never will. I was proud when I dropped a penny in a penny slot and won eleven cents in the casino in Las Vegas, I took a picture of my winnings, and I didn't drop another dime in there. But some folks have... Don't have the ability to walk out, and I think that this is a situation where us, as bold leaders, need to take a stance against illegal activities, and the ban just states that, simple and clear. It doesn't put anybody out of business, if they're truly operating legally, but, you know, when you ask them to hand over the operations manual or try to interrogate their machines, they don't wanna participate in that part of it, because they have something to hide. If there's an appearance of impropriety at this point, I think it's up to us to take a strong position and say, "Okay, then it's improper. If you're not gonna cooperate with us, you're out of business," if that's what it takes. Just telling it flat out. If you're... If what you're doing is operating something that's just real inert, and you're giving away stuffed animals, or like you go into Chuck E. Cheese and you win a bunch of tokens, and at the end of the day, you buy erasers and pencils, so be it. But this isn't what's happening. I had one person describe to me that they walked out with $1,200 on a Friday, they went back on Saturday and lost $1,600. That's not teddy bears and erasers and pencils. That's gambling. So I think it's up to us to control this.
Commissioners, I do wanna bring this in for a landing.
So Colonel Wells wants to speak.
I know we got two more, but today, we're just talking moratorium. That discussion will come back up after the Planning Commission...
Can I point out that Colonel Wells does have hair on his head?
I will, I will. I'm gonna do that, but I just... Mr. Pickens, you had your light on first, so let's...
This'll be short. I'm not for any illegal activity, especially gambling. I really thought that because we have talked about this for almost three years, about not having anything the Sheriff's Department to use as regulations for these, that I thought that that's where we were headed in the right direction with the ordinance that we sent to the Planning Commission that came back to us. Okay? If this is gonna move us forward to being able to give them what they need to stop these people from doing what they're doing, then I'm all for it. I just thought that the other one was where we were headed, and that we'd look at it in a year and be able to modify it and even maybe go to a ban then. So I just wanna make sure everybody understands that I'm not for illegal activity, but if somebody can operate one of these legally, then they ought to be able to operate the thing legally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for bringing this up today and starting this conversation. I just felt like it was time to have it again, before we went through another round of the Planning Commission and everything else, if indeed the commission decides to go that way, and they already have, so that's fine. But I'm not gonna fight. When this comes down to it, I'm not gonna fight for Internet Cafes, I'm not, but I'm gonna fight for a citizen to have the ability to do a legal activity, whether I believe in that activity or not. I'm gonna fight for that till I die, because that's the right thing to do. And what we can't do, as commissioners, in my opinion, is take away the ability of a citizen to do a legal activity. I'm not saying an illegal activity, I'm talking about a legal activity. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we...
Boy, I gotta have a chance to speak. Okay.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah. We're not trying to ban legal activities here. We really... The emails I get are kinda comical when people tell me they walk out with money in hand, and they walk out with more money than what they started with. That's an illegal operation, and I'm not placing my morality on that whatsoever. If they wanna open up a legal business, this commissioner's all for that. But I can tell you, what we heard during those meetings were not legal, and this commissioner doesn't mind standing up in the gap and saying, "Not in my community, this is not going to happen." Mr. Wells, you have the floor, sir.
Very, very... Because I agree with Commissioner Turner that we shouldn't be trying to ban anything that's legal. And we, in fact, in one time, had a legal Internet Cafe in Putnam County. It was on St. John's Avenue. It provided a source for people that didn't have Internet service at their home to go in and Google and watch these community meetings and do all of that. Absolutely. So I think that that's part of the reason we've looked at a difference in terminology, is that absolutely, is as, you know, you set up an Internet Cafe, and you can go in there and Google, which you can in these places, you can go to any website that they don't send you to, which you can't in any of the ones that we've experienced, and that's absolutely legal. Even if you can play games in there, it may be something that's legal. So I'm not... There will still be an incumbent responsibility upon a teamwork between the Sheriff's Office and code enforcement to determine if someone comes in and opens up something, we're still gonna have to make a determination if it's illegal or illegal, based on what they're doing. Is it a place for students from St. John's River State College who don't have Internet access to go in and access the Internet and do everything that they wanna do, even if it's look at Facebook and social media, then that's absolutely legal. If we determine that it's not, this just gives us an additional tool to use to shut down those that are illegal, without having to go through very expensive, very costly undercover investigations involving search warrants and raids and all of that type of stuff. So it is possible that somebody can operate an illegal Internet Cafe to do legal things, but I think that the adult gaming is what we have seen that we haven't found any legal basis to. So fortunately, the one on St. John's Avenue that operated illegal Internet Cafe, I don't think it's around anymore, but it seemed like a very interesting concept, and that is certainly an illegal use of Internet Cafes, so thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Colonel. Mr. Turner?
Joe, wouldn't you admit, though, that all the activities that are illegal at the present time are illegal now? I mean, the illegal portions of these are already illegal, so we're gonna ban... It looks like we're banning illegal activity that is already illegal.
I can see the...
And that's the part I can't get away from. Why are we passing an ordinance to ban something that's already illegal? I don't understand that, and it's illegal.
I think it just gives us an option to deal with it. For example, there's a federal statute that says sale of cocaine's illegal, but we also have a state statute as a different option to deal with it, and we also have even some ordinances in Putnam County that says you can't maintain a structure for the use of selling of drugs, but you have a state statute that deals with it, too. So I think it's just a different option for us to deal with it that won't involve making physical arrests, that won't involve very long, protracted investigations over months of time and exorbitant use of resources. I think there's still an incumbent responsibility for us, along with code enforcement, to determine that it's illegal before we take any option, and then we might decide, "Hey, this is the first time with this particular one, we're gonna exercise the county ordinance and handle it through that." They come back, come around again, we're still seeing the illegal activity, then it may elevate into the physical arrest. So I think it's just another tool in our toolbox, sir.
I understand. I just wanna make sure that we're not trying to do that. Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
My move that we move that we extend the Internet moratorium for sixty days.
A proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second.
Proper... Second by Commissioner Pickens to extend the moratorium for sixty days. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right. Commissioners, next, clerk of the court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have nothing to add this morning.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Appointments, Commissioners, I'll start to my right, Mr. Turner.
I don't have any today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Rawls?
I have none.
And I have none. Thank you. County Administrator, Mr. Terry Suggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. A couple of things. First of all, we're going to let Ms. Young get set up at the podium. We're going to talk about a, an activity that is taking place as we speak. It's our live auction. We are auctioning off some vehicles and I believe one generator. But Ms. Julianne Young, our deputy county administrator, will give us an update on that.
You might want to bring that microphone down.
Thank you, Chairman Harvey.
I was just trying to help. That's all.
Good morning. We're excited to announce to you that we have our first fleet and equipment auction go live late last night. It will be live. It'll close March 23 at 6:20 PM. The public is welcome to attend, as well as other agencies. We've used an online auctioneer, George Gideon Auctioneers, they're pretty popular. And we will have a web link and we're going to put a Facebook post out so that if members of the public would like to participate, they're welcome, too. There are currently 22 fleet units and one large generator that are available. And it went live last night. As of this morning, we have 10 bids on the 23 pieces of equipment and fleet items. And that bid, or you can see it online here, they do, Jacob hooked me up, so you can go through and you can see the items. It'll tell you, you can click for more pictures, you can get more information on it, and you can, more exciting for our side of the house is we can watch the bids go live. This bid currently has, on the 2004 Freightliner ambulance, has a bid of $210, which means it's going somewhere no matter what at the end of the auction.
Is there a way for people to come and look at it?
So currently, we are not allowing foot traffic to come look at it. However, the VIN and pictures and that kind of thing are online.
Well, how do they know? I mean, the only reason I'm asking that is I'm not interested in an old ambulance by any means, but if somebody could like walk in there and turn the key and see if it came on or not, it would probably at least triple or double or quadruple their, what they'd be willing to pay for it.
So most of these auctions are not set up for that type of activity. They're not set up for you to come test drive the vehicle or come turn it on, that type of thing, or to even consult with a mechanic regarding it. A lot of this equipment is going to be bids for people looking for parts for these particular pieces of equipment.
Julianne, let me, let me say, and big kudos to Nicole. Nicole, I hope you're watching, so thank you very much for all the hard work you've been doing on this. This has kind of been one of those thorn in my side since I've been here. I've asked for it from day one and it's taken a long time for us to get here. And I really want to thank you and your staff and Nicole for grabbing the bull by the horns, if you will, and putting this out there. It might not generate a lot of money right now, but it's a start. And it's a good start to get, and if you haven't been over to Public Works and sell the whole landscape of all this, it's pretty ugly over there with all this stuff. So I'm so excited and I'm glad that our, you know, one of my things I really wanted to focus on this year was getting these surplus items out and get them away from us and getting the money back in the taxpayers' hands. We put that money back in our reserve. We can use it for other things. We can use it to lower the millage rate. There's all kinds of things we can do with it. So kudos to you and your staff and thank you for a, a road that was very long to get here, but we're here now and I'm excited about it. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Julianne and your staff for doing this. I think I mentioned probably back to Press Tompkins days and even to Quinn, that, you know, if you need parts off of this, let's figure out which ones you need. If not, let's get rid of this and just get it out of here. If nothing else, it's going to leave a lot of room out there to park, you know, running equipment out at Public Works. So I appreciate you doing that and get rid of this and bring some money in. So thank you.
Mr. Rawls?
I just flip through the auction real quick and we've got quite a few dump trucks on there. I had a gentleman come down the other day from Pride Enterprises and we were discussing what Pride does, and I asked him if Putnam County, if they do a lot of business with Putnam County, and he said, not really. He said that he had spoken to someone from Public Works a while back and I was shocked to find out that we're not doing business with them. Maybe they don't, maybe not the best vendor, but I found out from a local person that they are able to pressure treat lumber. Then I find out they have a full-on lumber mill. And so the phone call was about the beams and the butts for the ferry landing, and they said, oh, God, yeah, we do that all the time. But I just want to make sure there's not an opportunity for us to take one of these dump trucks, send it to Pride, get it rechassied and have a savings versus, you know, selling it for a few hundred dollars in scrap metal, because right now scrap prices are up and that, that bid at $210 isn't going to stand. Somebody's going to realize the value of that thing just in the sheer weight, haul it to the scrapyard and you make money. But that was just a question, a comment that I wanted to make about that, see if maybe we can get a conversation going one day about Pride and how we can take advantage of that.
Sure. And Commissioner, to that note, we have met with Pride. We are set up to utilize Pride and we have, at various times, and departments have utilized them to get a quote to what it would be to rechasse or to rebuild something. We have not found a project where it's been advantageous for us for that particular use. However, we're set up to use Pride from everything. End users can use them for everything, from business cards to shirts to rechassing a, a piece of equipment. So we are set up. It is an option. I have had a couple of meetings where we have gone through different services they would offer to that end department, and they have utilized them, get a quote and see what the value is going to be, but the return hasn't been there yet. But it's certainly something that we've used in our toolboxes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
A lot of times when they have these type of online auctions that last for a couple of weeks or whatever, when they wind them up, they wind them up with a day of auction. So they take the, the, the starting bid is usually the internet bid and they take it from there and move forward. Are we planning that or whatever it brings online, we're done, send it to them?
For this particular auction, it's going to be whatever is, closes out online. We can certainly explore an option of finishing out in a live scenario in future auctions.
Well, if somebody doesn't know we got this deal going on, they could buy a 2004 dump truck for $210 possibly.
That's correct.
And we think that's a good thing?
Well, I think we need to get rid of our junk. We got a junkyard over there.
I understand, I understand, but usually, I mean, we used to go to the auctions all the time back years ago when we were actually needing some new stuff or to do something with it. But, and it, a lot of times nowadays, it starts online, but that's, if you showed up to an auction, the last day's an auction and all the internet bidding, some of them even allow you to bid while it's going on even, you know, for a final day. So they like build up the, the start of it. So I'm okay, but I think we should look into that for future. I think this is definitely the way to go. There's no doubt about it. I just think it needs to end up with an auction day for somebody to walk up there, turn the key that morning at nine o'clock. If it fires up, I guarantee you that 2004 dump truck will bring a lot more money than $210.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Rawls?
Once upon a time, I went to Water Management District and drove a dump truck out of there for $800 and they said it had bad brakes. We filled the reservoir, bled the brake cylinders and drove it to my house. But, you know, the, somebody, somebody will see the value in this. If the truck weighed, it says it weighs 17,000 pounds. There's probably about $1,200 in scrap value as it sits just on the, on the tires. But to me psychologically, not driving to Public Works and seeing all the junk, that would be worth tons of thousands of dollars.
I agree with that.
Psychological currency, because it, it, I know it's got to be exhausted to the employees that work over there. I, I hate seeing it out here in our parking lot, to be honest with you, but over there, it's just right in your face as you drive in.
Yeah. And Julianne, again, I think, you know, we need to crawl before we walk and we need to run before, after that, so, you know, we can start enhancing these programs as we go, but this is a great first start and I appreciate your, your work on that. And Nicole, if you're watching, thank you very much.
I think this would be a very good informational piece to do on our county's Facebook page, too.
It's going out this afternoon.
Where people know this thing's going on, where the more participants we have, the better off we're going to be.
Are we going to put it on our website, too?
We are.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. Mr. Hotel, I'll get to you at public comments if you don't mind, okay? County Administrator, is that it?
No, sir, just one more thing. And I also want to join in and thank Julianne and Nicole for their, their efforts. They were, it reminds us of a conversation Commissioner Pickens and I had when we went and visited out there at Fleet some time back. And so the process has started. We'll see if we can get it cleaned up and see if we can't make some changes out there. So that's a good thing. Last coming, I have Mr. Chairman, just so the Commissioners are all aware, we are in the budget processes as we speak. So we are working now getting with our department heads and their staff and, and on their needs assessment for this year and starting the process. So when we get that process back and start going through line on a budget, I certainly want and expect each one of my Commissioners to come meet with us and let's sit down and go through the budget process as we move forward.
Can I ask, ask a question for you, though? Could you, when the department heads come to you this year, could you just bring us kind of exactly what they need, not filter that, if you don't mind?
We have asked the department heads. We sent out our spreadsheets, just so you know. I want to know what it is that you feel like you need to get your job done this year.
Exactly. I think in the past, and I don't think it was under your administration, has been, well, hold the line on this or hold the line, you know, that doesn't give us the full picture of what we're looking for. And I'm excited about the budget coming up this year and, you know, I'm excited a lot of things for Putnam County, but truly.
I am, too. And Mr. Chairman, let's, let's don't be remiss, and it was U5 Commissioners, three years ago, when we started, sat down and did the first budget, me and Mr. Reynolds, when, when Mr. Reynolds was our deputy, we were in a difficult, a different position than what we are today. And so then because of the efforts that U5 have made in the direction that you took at that point, we're in a much better position today. So we're asking our department heads to bring us back what you need so we can have that discussion and bring forward to the board at the appropriate time.
Chairman? Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
I would truly like to make sure that they understand that we don't want their wish list.
That has been communicated.
We would like what they need because a couple of years ago, we started getting, we had $30 million worth of requests a few years ago for a million dollars worth of spending. And so we, you know, I understand the things that they, they need and the things they require to do better, and even a few things they need to make things more efficient or better or whatever. I'm into that, too, absolutely. But, but like I said, I think the big word here is what they need.
And Mr. Chairman, that message has been sent. We've had multiple conversations about that, is we absolutely want what they need given to us. We have an opportunity in the future to talk about wants and desires and how we might want to make some changes in the future, but for now, we need to know what our needs are.
I agree. Mr. Rawls?
I'll, I'll take the wish list if they want to give it personally. So I, anything the department has can get me. I understand that we have needs, but I also understand that wants can lead to savings and savings leads to covering the cost of needs. So I'd like to look at this thing holistically, not just what we need to hold the line right where we are right now, because I'm aware that there are some changes that can be made from a budgetary perspective that could offer cost savings. So, and since we're discussing budget, one of the, the wish list items that I had on the agenda items that were discussed would, is the impact of the $15 an hour minimum wage. So I think, you know, as soon as we can get that moved to the top of the pile, because that's, that's going to have an effect on us.
I think that's going to happen in our budget meetings. I looked, I started looking, I'll talk about our priority a little bit later, but, okay, good. Thank you very much. And I do want to say, Commissioner Rawls, yesterday I was in a meeting here and true, truly, it started off in one direction and it got kind of big, but it got big because there was a potential savings when it gets big. There was a lot of, hey, what about this? What did you think about that? Maybe we could go with this piece of equipment. And at first it was like, whoa, whoa, stop, but the conversation started going, well, we could save here and we could save there by doing, I'm, I'm, I'm with you on that. I'm ready to have that conversation. County Attorney, Mr. Commando?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And Commissioners, I'm going to swap out 13 and 12 real quick. Mr. Tim Holon, you've been very patient, so we'll take public comment for miscellaneous items now.
Good afternoon. Tim Hoteling, San Mateo, citizen. My comments are a little bit more germane to when I first stood up to the auction. I've attended bunches of auctions and I've forwarded some opportunities for savings to y'all under different things, especially the trailways and waterways and stuff where we could get stuff for free from other outfits. So I have a little bit of experience. Number one, you can pull all of that equipment at any time, up until the time that you sell that stuff. Number two, you can have a thing they call a minimum bid, a reserve. You could take a God, pardon me, you could take an individual of the really neat St. John's junkyards, the two or three guys up there, bring them down, have them take a look at it and ask them for what, how much this piece of equipment is worth for scrap and set that as a minimum bid. $200 is obscene. Number three, all I saw is up on the screen, so I may be speaking out of light, but every auction that I've seen, except silly GSA auctions, have a further description. All you have is, this is the equipment. It doesn't even say it wasn't running when it came in. There are some really good sites selling some really good government equipment. Downriver, Downstate, that has this old boy with a video. We're in an electronic age now. Each piece of equipment comes in and turns on and he's got this camera going and he shows, well, there's a little rust here and there's a little this, that, and, but it's a really good unit. And turns the key and you can see it. And it, just as Commissioner Turner said, makes all the difference in the world. But to call this a fully, I'm sorry, I got wound up. To call this, it's a really good start. Yes, it is. You can pull that equipment. You can at least tell your customers what it looks like and have an educated half a guess for them. Because if I was sitting on the other side of the state and I took a look at this and that's all the information that was there, I'd laugh at you. And that's what you'd end up with, $200 for however many thousand dollars worth of scrap. I'm sorry.
I don't think we need to be laughed at. And number two, this is something you wanted seven years.
Oh, yeah. I'm not, no, no, don't get me wrong.
Hang on, my turn. So now we're, we're crawling and any, any advice we can get to make us walk and run, we're all about that, Mr. Tim, and you know that.
Well, and you know how to get ahold of me.
I do. Mr. Rawls?
Commissioner Harvey said it well. I, you know, my comment was going to be, these are baby steps, but they're baby steps in the right direction. And, and your comments are well taken, so obviously there's room for improvement, but we've got to start. And it's, we can add the language tomorrow. Somebody can go take a few more pictures. But I, I, I agree with you, but at the same time, from a staff's perspective, I think getting this off of the, their psychological burden.
I'm not arguing that, but to not even know whether it's a, a bucket of bolts and a bunch of rust.
We hear you.
Or whether it was driven in.
Mm-hmm. But I, I think also what flashed through my mind was, it's going to take staff time to do that. And everybody's busy right now. This stuff's been sitting around. It's, you know, it really.
So how much are you paying the auctioneer? Most auctioneers take a big hit. They take at least 10% hit. And part of that is they're getting paid for their services of preparing and inventorying and advertising. What are you guys getting for that auction service?
Well, thank you for your comment. We got that.
It's an opportunity to learn.
Yeah. It hasn't fallen on deaf ears. Sarah, do you want to come up and read that letter from Mr. David Wade? He's asked for us to read that into the Commissioner, I mean, to the public comment portion.
Mr. Chairman, well, I have no problem with this, I think we're setting a real nasty precedence. I think that now every single person that writes a letter or an email that asks for this, and they had over a hundred of them last year, and we made it part of the record, but we didn't end it, we didn't read it into the record.
Thank you.
I know that I'm going to catch it hell from David.
I was going to address this under Commissioner Comments anyway, so.
You know what, I think the consensus, and I feel the same way now, we're just going to put that as part of the record, we're not going to be held hostage to read everything that somebody wants us to read. Thank you. Is that how we all feel?
Yes.
That's how I feel. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other public comment on miscellaneous items? Seeing non-Commissioner comments, we'll turn to Mr. Rawls.
So, back to David Wade's letter, I had spoken to David last week or week before about this, and this is my district, I personally don't think that this is anything close to being viable right now, it's a way futuristic conversation, obviously, I think it's going to probably manifest itself when Governor's Park projects is nearing completion, they start doing more developing the south end of Clay County, but we don't have the money to even consider paving Sun Garden Road right now. It's great to have on a wish list, but I think, me personally, I would like to see other stuff happen a lot closer to Plac.
We have a bridge called Three Ten that's coming up.
Exactly. Well, no, we have several bridges that are not even on the radar.
Yeah, if there was any way we could have done this, we'd have done it back when that bridge went out. I'm telling you, we looked at every option where we could find money, looked at DOT, I talked to David, too, and tried to explain to him, there's just, I don't see it happening unless something happens in the future, like you said, where it could be done.
Then yesterday, I attended an emergency CRA meeting that was called, we went over the draft plan for the community redevelopment agency, and they've got a, the CRA has a pretty cool conceptual plan of what they're going to be doing with the downtown area, St. John's Avenue, from about, I'm going to say Eighth Street to the river, but it's really focusing around Seventh Street and South. But they're looking at some new signage, you know, Plac is poised to go through a resurgence, and I've been saying it for years, as Plac goes, we'll go. I think we really need to get engaged with the county, with the city commission, and more specifically with the CRA, and see if there's any help that we can afford them. One of the topics that came up for conversation was a plea for emergency funding for a house that was damaged by a very large oak tree limb that wiped out a second floor, a portion of a second floor structure and a front porch on a vintage home that's owned by Warren Willhite and his wife. And they came to the CRA saying, look, we've, you know, we've got a hundred thousand dollars, we can't afford to spend more than eighty-five thousand dollars because of medical bills they have to cover, they're asking for a fifteen thousand dollar emergency grant. We put something in motion yesterday that might be able to help with that, but then I was thinking, you know, is there anything that we can do with our L-HAP to maybe address something like that, especially in the north and south side historic districts, because when you look at these districts, you have a lot of valuable homes that could become very invaluable if we're not careful. And when you, part of their issue was that insurances went up so high, they couldn't afford insurance, so the tree limb falls out, and they're sitting naked, basically. So, you know, I was sitting there thinking about it, you know, the south side, the north side historic districts, the central TIF district is in our county, it's in our, obviously in our domain, and we benefit from them having the homes there. And part of our comprehensive plan acknowledges that we will identify homes in the county that are historic in nature, and I just wondered if there might be something that we can put on for a workshop discussion, maybe invite the city commission, have one or two of their representatives come over and have a conversation with them about what we can do collectively, because I asked Tom Holmes after the meeting, is there anything that can be done with the ship, and the answer is, we don't know. So it's our L-HAP, you know, the worst thing we can do is send it up to the Housing Finance Corporation, and they reject it, but I just think it might be something for future conversation to have.
So what I'm hearing you say is, we need to look at our local, our current L-HAP, and see if there's a possibility of us helping through our ship program in that L-HAP?
Correct.
Mr. Seuss?
We're going forward with our L-HAP, because our L-HAP's about expired.
What's the consensus of the board? Do you want to engage staff to look at that?
Well, if I may.
You may, please.
I, I think that it's a worthy, a worthy subject to look at in a workshop, for sure, in that particular case, and I don't think is a good example, because a customer has a hundred thousand dollars and decides that the insurance is not a good item for him, but now that he has an issue, he wants the government to pay part of it, where he could have just paid his, and you got to understand, this tickles for me, because I'm real close to the guy that you're talking about there.
Well, what was disclosed also last night was that they sold their business to get the hundred thousand dollars, they have absolutely exhausted their resources, and I don't think anybody last night sat there that weren't holding back tears for the Willhites, but this is not the only house in Putnam County that will, that could possibly have this happen, and as, when we were going through the comp plan last week.
Don't we allow that in the ship now, or Commissioner Rawls, as far as allowing somebody to come in that needs financial assistance on a, on a home? We'd allow do that now in the ship program, don't we?
I'm thinking of it as being a little more flexible in the ship, so the ship says, you know, you can apply for a forty thousand dollar grant, we just approved some this morning. But what if somebody needed ten or fifteen thousand, or?
Like an emergency.
Yeah, and in this case, USDA could come into play, and this is where we really need to have a staff representative that's able to regurgitate this stuff and say, because last night, somebody said, you know, I want to say maybe it was Tyrrell Hill it brought up, so that USDA has that sixty-five hundred dollar grant that anybody within just sixty-five can have access to, but if we don't have a staff member that can put people in touch with that, so that could knock out half of the requests. But I'm just saying, if we had something that's a little more flexible in our L-HAP, not just rubber stamp, you ever get, that's what this, these past commissioners have done, they've just taken the L-HAP and go, okay, this will work, we'll just re-up it and re-up it, and, you know, play with the numbers, but do something a little more meaningful and more direct, and focus maybe some of our attention on some of the historic nature of our housing.
I'm good, you got, you don't have to keep selling.
I'm going to filibuster this, too.
You don't have to keep selling, I'm good.
I think what I'm trying to get to, before I call on Commissioner Pickens, is before we engage staff, you know, we need to have a consensus, and we've said that for a while now.
I'm good to start the conversation, Mr. Chairman, I think that they need to see where they can go with it first, and have a discussion, you know, amongst, with Sam, Sam's our grants guy, and I don't know if he's our L-HAP ship guy or not, but he's our grants guy, but maybe Terry, or Mr. Seuss can, could start the conversation and see where it could go, and where it's legal to go, and what programs are out there, whatever, and then if we can then bring it to workshop at some point, and let's have a talk about it. I don't have any problem helping the people.
Mr. Seuss? Absolutely, so here's what, here's my suggestion, and if you would like, Commissioner Rawls, let's schedule some time with us, get our calendars, let's sit down, I'll invite Mr. Sullivan in with us, and let's get to the meat of what it is that you're asking for, and then we can move forward with that, and we can bring it back to the commission at the workshop. But also, just as a reference, let's, the TIF district itself, the CRA district itself, gets funding through the county, through the, through the assessment program, and those fundings can also, those monies can also be used for grant projects through the CRA plan that's already in place. So we'll look and see how we might be able to work together and complement the other.
We did agree to set aside in the three TIFs, but not set aside, make available the monies that's currently set aside for sidewalks and for landscaping projects, so you have to understand, the TIFs are pretty much out of money at the, at the end of the budget year, they're doing as much as they can, and it, you know, if you drive through Plac, you'd have to be blind to not realize, they are really making a big difference down in the TIF areas, but it's just, they're very constrained by the little bit of money they get to spend, and then something like this happens, and then the question is, you know, and we were going through our plan, and part of our plan yesterday regards the historic nature of the districts, and the fact that we should be preserving the houses, and it's kind of an oxymoron, but, I mean, do you let a house like that sit for two and a half years and continue to deteriorate, or?
Mr. Rawls, Mr. Pickens would like to comment on your, on your.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
And that's all I got.
Okay, yeah, we actually, as I'm sitting on the A-HAC committee, so we're going to look at the L-HAP in, I think it's March twenty-fourth, and bring back recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, I understand how that works, so we'll be looking.
Probably where it needs a star.
We'll be looking at that.
With this caution, though, A-HAC is affordable housing, I'm talking about something that's...
He said L-HAP.
Yeah.
And we'll be looking at the L-HAP, is what Antonio Jenkins said, we'll have that meeting, so we'll start that discussion, because he wanted to include all the mayors, you know, of the municipalities that participated in that, too, because I guess they do get some ship money, too. But anyways, part of, if I understood from talking to Antonio Jenkins yesterday, that the two overages that we approved today, those, those were emergency funds.
Right.
So there may be some funds available for this, I may be incorrect, but that's what, those were emergency repairs, and I think it was for people who fell through the cracks without insurance, so I'd like to be, I guess I can't be in on that conversation with Commissioner Rawls in the room, but I'd like to be in there at some point with this, and then move it forward, if I can, with the A-HAC and, and then the L-HAP that we're discussing.
We'll certainly, once we have our communications with Commissioner Rawls, we'll put it together for a workshop, that way everybody'll be able to sit down at the table and have a conversation about it.
Okay.
You know, what's refreshing is that we're having a discussion about the L-HAP, where, you know, we have been trying to catch up and catch up and catch up, and it's nice to finally have that conversation, so Commissioner Pickens, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. First, I want to apologize to Mr. David Wade, because I did not return his email, but I felt that the other commissioners are going to on Sun Garden Road, so I just would like to mention, I'm sure everybody saw in the newspaper a couple of weeks ago honoring Mr. Willie Washington, just one of Putnam County's finest citizens for his, for the service to the community, and unfortunately, he passed away Wednesday, the day after the election. He does hold a city council seat in Wallaka, but I just wanted to, everybody keep their thoughts and prayers of the Washington family. Mr. Willie was, I think, the first African-American deputy in the county, he was the first African-American to sit on the town council in Wallaka, and he has, not consecually, but has served since nineteen sixty-eight, and always, he served a stint as police chief in Wallaka. To describe him, he was a person who I never saw in a bad mood, and just an asset to Putnam County, to Wallaka, and to his profession, so he will be surely missed, but definitely not forgotten, and Pam is, you know, part of his family, so if you see her, you might mention, and grew up with, actually graduated with the daughter Cynthia, and then Kenny is a, does business with me, and he's the same way, you've never seen him in a bad mood, so just want to mention that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd like to start today with wishing Commissioner Adams Ak a speedy recovery for him not being able to be with us today, and then I'd like to move into a situation that is taking place that I think is tremendous for Putnam County. The San Mateo Fire Department, which we've been working on the ISO ratings, we, Director Grimes has been working on the fire rating in that area, and the San Mateo Fire Service has agreed to donate the building to us, the San Mateo Fire Service Building, to the county. We've already got a quick claim deed signed. Mr. Seoffey and JR went out and looked at it, and they came back with a better-than-clean bill of health on the building. Mr. JR Grimes, our, our director of, if you'll come up, JR, has worked diligently on this as part of his overall bring people into the umbrella.
Yeah.
We were having a lot of difficulty manning that station, getting someone that would fill out ISO papers and all that kind of stuff. By bringing this into the county system, this building into the county system, then we would have the ability to try and get the ISO rating changed in the not-too-distant future, back to where a favorable rating, and so I'm going to ask the commission today to accept that quick claim deed, and, and bring that fire department into the county system, and that I'm going to turn over to any questions or comments by Director Grimes.
So your, your request today is to bring, for the county to accept the building that houses the San Mateo?
We've got a quick claim deed that's been signed, and we've got to accept it, for it belongs to us.
And one thing, gentlemen, I want to, I want to say, when we bring these buildings in, we also need to have, we don't need to set a limit, because there's closing costs and other fees associated with that, so, but when you make a motion, please include that, so if we get audited, that we know that. Mr. Grimes, you have the floor, sir?
Yeah, I would just like to say, because one of the objectives was to meet with the individual folks and find out what we could do to help to get our ISOs under control, and, you know, when I met with the chief that was down there, he was like, man, listen, I'm busy, I don't have time, all my people are wore out, and I said, well, what can we do to help? So I met with him, I came back and talked to Administrator Seuss, went down and looked at the building underneath their direction to see, with Mr. Seoffey and I, and according to his words, he says, you'd be a missed opportunity if you didn't take this building, it's a concrete block building with a metal roof, already has a generator in place, they really just didn't have time to go out and do recruiting, I've got people that can go in the station, we just had to get access to it. They didn't have the funds to maintain it, it needs to be cleaned, I mean, you know, they were paying out of their own personal pockets to cut the grass, they were out of funds. So this was just the one way that we could reach out to them and say, hey, we got an option for you here, so we're just looking today for you guys to give us some further direction on whether you want to do it. We did all the work, I got with Mr. Commando, did what we need to do legally, so that we could take all the appropriate steps, so just looking for your guys' directions, if you want to move forward with it, we'll be happy to do it, we'll get some people down there and start getting the insurance ratings down. Just for a little bit of information, I did talk to Mike Morash, which is the area supervisor for ISO on Thursday last week, we had a Zoom conference with him, and I asked him, you know, the potential of just doing an ISO rating for the entire Putnam County area, he said we should have had that conversation fifteen years ago, which I can agree, he said, absolutely, we just got to get four months of documentation in a row, and then it's going to take probably another six months after that before they finish their evaluation. So when we do that, we're going to push this forward, we have to have a fire station every five miles radius in order to get full credit, now they will give you an X rating out there outside of that five mile rating, which we can get through a tanker shuttle, so all those pieces are being put in now, so it shouldn't take as much longer to get where we need to be. This is just one piece of the puzzle, we got to kind of have, to make sure we encompass that five mile area, and this was one way that we could get there, so just asking for your approval.
Chairman, one last thing before I turn it over to other commissioners to start commenting on this issue, I want to give full kudos to Chief Grimes, or Director Grimes, he came up with this as part of his deal, I've known about it for a while now, but I can't talk to you guys about it except in one of these meetings, and so, but Chief Grimes, or Director Grimes has done really well, he was chief of the city for so many years, I have a hard time calling him Director Grimes, but Director Grimes is, this is definitely a feather in his cap, and I do think that, that as long as we agree to allow it, I don't think any expenses that we're seeing right now is over the limit of the chairman and the, and the administrator to be able to do whatever we need as far as a little painting, or whatever the case may be that we come up with here to make this a little better, so, you know, if it is, it would come back to us anyhow, so as long as we agree to let them look at these options, I'd make that part of my request, is accepting it, is to include whatever fees we need, and of course, like I said, the administrator has the ability to do that anyhow, to what I think we're going to need here.
Mr. Turner, Mr. Pickens would like to comment on your item.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, JR, we've discussed a little bit about some of your plans, and it's got to take, you know, the right steps to move them forward, so evidently, this is one of them. Were they not receiving any funding from the county?
Yes, they have a county allocated fund every year that has been continued to fund, there's honestly been nobody there really to spend it, so, I mean, it has been, it's rolled over into a fire reserve, for no better word, but, yeah, they still have a county allocated fund this year, so when the volunteers come in, we do have volunteers willing to go in there and volunteer today, they will have a budget that was set forth by the county many, many years ago, and we're currently working on getting those where they need to be, but, you know, they'll have the ability to go in there and put paint on the walls when we own the building, because that really does help, because then we can spend our county tax dollars inside of a, now will be a public building versus a private building, so we do have the ability to go in there and do the maintenance that it needs to have done, so this does kind of make it easy, so now they do have, they can use our allocated county funding to do actual improvements to the building, so, but yes, to answer your question, they do have a county fund.
This will be done by a quick claim deed, I guess?
It's already been signed, yes.
Okay, so no codes cases on this building.
That, Mr. Chairman, that was going to be my comment, so if it is the will of the commission when the motion is made, I'd like for, part of the motion will be for the county administrator and legal to do their due diligence before we accept the building into our, our system, just to assure ourselves of that.
I don't have a problem making that part of it, but we've already sent the building official out there to look at it, and they came back with a glowing review, so is there something there that you're looking for that you can't find, or what?
No, sir, I think that will behoove us, so just like the ones that we hear every day that come in here to do a title search, make sure there is nothing that is out there that would preclude us from being able to do this.
I'm good, yeah, okay.
Mr. Rawls would like to comment, Mr. Turner, on your item.
The only thing that I would request.
Yes, sir.
Is that we do a phase one environmental on the property, you know, with all the concerns right now, environmentally, we don't want to find out that they were out there changing motor oil every weekend on their personal vehicles and dumping it in the ground, but I, I would like you to turn around and look at Mr. Hotelling, and tell him that help is on the way with his insurance issue.
Absolutely.
Because this is exactly, this goes exactly to what he's been letting us know is happening, and he's, no, I'm stationed... And he's, the station, is it 19?
19, yes, sir.
Is not the only one that has a high ISO rating. I would encourage you to just get us to a five. Don't shoot for a one.
No.
Get to the five, and everyone will be jumping for joy. But I also think that we need to start notifying the public that as this happens, they are going to see a cost savings in their insurance. We should not be ashamed to ask them to help support the lowering of their insurance by maintaining a fire service, whether it's paid or volunteer, in the community to keep to maintain this. Otherwise, they're going to pay us now or pay us later.
And I want to, may I comment on your item, sir? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Director Grimes, I'm going to say you're a breath of fresh air, too. We have had to have this talk, and we haven't had this talk. Previous boards have it. And it was time to have this. It's past time to have the talk. And the fire service is near to dear to my heart, too. And ISO ratings, I can tell you firsthand what happens with those. But it's not just about ISO and saving. It's about response and saving lives. And that's what we're charged with under our Section 125 of Florida statute. So this is the job of the county commission, and it shouldn't be anybody else's job. So that's the end of my comments. Commissioner Turner, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept this building upon the attorney saying there's no title work issues.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a proper motion about title, about accepting a building with title. And we have a second by Commissioner Pickens.
Mr. Chairman, may I change that motion?
Yes, you may amend your motion.
That there's no title issues that can't be easily resolved. So I don't want to kill this deal over something that'd take 10 bucks to fix in an hour.
Okay. Mr. Pickens, or you'll amend your?
Yes, I'll amend a second.
Okay, so the actual motion is to accept the building, and if with title insurance, that can easily be.
Issues, not insurance.
Title issues that can be easily rectified. Any further comment? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Turner, is that the end of your comment?
No, I'd like to make one more, Mr. Chairman.
Feels good to do that, doesn't it?
Do what?
Feels good not to be the chairman, so you can do that.
That's right. I want to give kudos to the, to the Purchasing Department, General Services, as far as getting the auction off the ground. I know that's been a big issue for Commissioner Harvey for quite some time, kind of like he and Buddy Goddard champion the getting rid of the properties we don't need laying around here just because we don't need them issues. And it's going pretty well. I would really think that we need to maybe hire an auction company or something that actually does the things, the extra marketing things, because they'll pay for theirself. I mean, they'll get enough money to pay for theirself. And they'll do all the little things that Tim was talking about, the videos, and the, this one cranks up, that one doesn't, and this one's for junk. You know, this one, they'll kind of put that in there to some degree. They won't, they're not completely honest, but they're not completely forthcoming, let's put it like that. Forthcoming. But it's, well, they are car dealers. What do you expect?
Oh, you just made all the car dealers.
Yeah, that's all right. Well, most of them, like, that's good.
We're not going to mention lawyers, are we?
So anyhow, I think we should try to, I think the program's great. Kudos to getting it out and running. But we sure need to spend the taxpayers' money as good as we can, and their resources too. And so I think that part of that would be to try to get the best price we can out of stuff. I know we want it gone. And having it gone is great. It'll empty that field that we have that we've been looking at. But I think we need to look at it from a little different perspective as far as getting somebody that's going to market it. And I'm, there's one company, and I'm not going to mention the name on TV, but I get an email from them three times a week. They got an auction going on. We're somewhere in the southeast United States with videos of everything. And you can contact them, and they let you come a day early and look at the stuff if you're interested in a certain piece of equipment. So those things bring money. You know, they're not just selling them for junk like we're doing. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I think that's all I have to do. Thank you.
You gave me a vision of Art Grendel jumping on top of the ambulance, trying to sell you.
There's a name from the past. Art Grendel's Wheel Ranch. Why do I remember that?
Because he fell through the roofs all the time. Slaps the prices. Remember that? Yep. Gentlemen, thank you. I want to say this to y'all. Last week, the comprehensive plan meeting was pretty much a good all-day meeting. But man, did we get a lot accomplished that day. A little apprehensive at first of going line by line, page by page. But you know what amazed me, and I was telling Sarah this at the newspaper, and I told Mr. Suggs this later on, too, that most of all the things we wanted to talk about, even though we don't sit around and talk behind closed doors, we're almost all in agreement on those items. So we've been listening. We've been hearing the problems. And this commission has taken good steps to making Putnam County's future very prosperous. Gentlemen, that's all I have. And we will have a workshop meeting at 2:00. This meeting is adjourned.